All right, there we go. Hey, we're gonna call our board supervising meeting to order at this time, September 3rd. Uh, Ms. Slade, would you pray for us, please?
I pray. Lord, God, we acknowledge your presence here with us today and we thank you for it. Father, we thank you for being a good, loving, merciful, and gracious father. And, well, we come to you now as your children and ask for your help, Father, for your power, Father, for your wisdom and guidance. Uh, we need it. Uh, we need it desperately, Father. I pray for the decisions that these gentlemen are gonna be asked to make. I pray, Lord, that you'll help to open their eyes to see what's in the best interest of all of our citizens. Thank you for their sacrifice, their willingness to serve their community. Thank you for the time that they give, the sacrifices that their families make. Father, may they feel a special sense of encouragement today. Uh, Father, may they have a sense of accomplishment today. I pray for that specifically. Lord, for our law enforcement, our emergency responders, God, we pray for the protection that comes from heaven over them. Lord, I pray that you would deliver them from any peril and that you would bring them home safely to their families across state.
Amen. Thank you, Greg. Uh, before we go on to plan commission, I was gonna let Mr. Paul Franco come on up.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I've got several items, uh, to discuss for your, for your review. Uh, first one is on the courthouse. Let me, uh, give you an update status on that. We're passing out right now is the latest cost update. Where we at, as you may remember, substantial completion happened on July 17th. And after that, they typically are given 30 days to finish the punch list. They are not through. They've gotten most of the ones, it appears, in the interior done. They're still working on some exterior things. They have given us an update on a couple of occasions. I requested another one this week. I didn't get one, but they are trying to move forward. They are having a few issues with some of their subcontractors. That's where some of the delays are occurring. But, uh, according to their latest pay application, which they submitted and I reported to the county, they're 98% through. They are, if the board approves their current pay application, which is $476,676.96, that will still leave 1.3 million, 1.3 million, $344,000 left in the contract to finish. Their latest pay application is for work accomplished through July. It does not include anything in the August. That still also leaves $946,000 in retainage as part of that 1.3 million. So, there's still a good amount of money that's left in this contract. And obviously, they're not gonna be getting paid final payment until everything's complete and we've reviewed it again. They have did, like, in the last few weeks, they've completed most of the landscape work. We reviewed that. Our landscape architect had a punch list of, I don't know, 14, 15, 16 items that need to be either replaced or redone. Last week, we met with the AV consultant, the sound subcontractor, fine tuning the sound systems in the courtroom. Scott was there, Scott Cole, and, uh, I think most of that work has been done. They still were completing it when I left, uh, Friday. So, uh, this coming Friday, we've got the lighting contractor and the manufacturer, who's from out of state coming in to, uh, adjust the lights in the outlets. You may not be aware, but the energy code, which is a national energy code, requires occupancy sensors and a certain number of outlets to go off at a certain time. Nobody that I'm aware of likes this, but it's a, it's a code requirement. But anyhow, they've been having some issues with the lights going off while they're still in occupied rooms. And that's just a matter of adjusting that generally. So, they're coming in to finally, hopefully, get that finalized. Same thing with the outlets. They can, they can reprogram all that. So, that's supposed to happen tomorrow. And there's other things, like the flag posts need to be put up and things like that. Gates need to be finally programmed. So, they're still working on all that, but that's the status of the courthouse.
Carl, I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
I can see where that would work for the most government employees, other than Janice, and a lawyer, and a judge, and some of their help. Their hours are so erratic. I mean, it's according on what kind of court, what kind of day they've had, as to how late they're gonna stay or how early they're gonna get there the next morning.
I agree 100% Steve, and, uh, what we're trying to do is get it reprogrammed and, uh...
Yeah, no problem.
Well, again, we're getting...
There's nothing we can do to that that...
Well, you can...
Cause you're gonna have certain, I mean, this and that.
Yeah. There are systems that can be bypassed, but I, that has to be done internally. The contractor's under, uh, obligation to follow the code.
I understand that.
But it, it, I agree. Nobody likes this. The engineers don't like it. The contractors don't like it.
Makes worse, I would say, on judges and attorneys than about anybody else I can think of.
This is one, this is another one of these similar federal mandates that they don't, you know, a lot of times, they don't fund them. But this time, they don't anticipate practicality, and it's just a...
It's a mandate?
Yeah, well, it's a mandate. It's in the code, actually. It's in, adopted by the building code. And it all comes back with the save. It's on this, the save energy, which we're all, you know, we all wanna be efficient and good steward of our resources, but there's, there's, they need to have flexibility in these codes, and sometimes they don't. So, that, that's, that's where it is. But anyhow...
Okay, Jake, tell me how we're gonna fix it.
It should be, uh...
The, uh, we, we have the ability to ask for and receive a court order that provides some measure of protection to make adjustments that would be difficult otherwise. So, we're prepared to receive that.
Okay.
At your discretion, what I need to know is precisely what needs to be included in an order that will provide whatever impetus is needed to force the vendor, the contractor, the subcontractor, who, whoever is standing in the way, to get them off of dead center. I just need to know exactly what needs to be in there.
And we can do that. I'm hoping, though, that, uh, by tomorrow, after they leave here, that that situation is corrected. If not, we'll, we'll certainly pursue that. But that's where we are on the courthouse, and to be honest with you, I know Bob wants to know when they're gonna be through the punch list. Like anything else, I can't give you a, a, a defensive answer. There's not a lot left, but they've gotta get these guys out there to, to fix it. I went by there this morning before I came here. I went, went by there with Winston. And there are, uh, people out there working. They're trying to work around court operations and things of that nature. But there's some things that they just need to go ahead and get up, like the flag posts. I don't quite understand what's, why those haven't been erected. But, uh, y'all have any other questions regarding the courthouse?
Yeah, I, I got a couple of things I wanted to hit on just for a second. I spoke to several of the judges, obviously, Larry Swales and the same point. Those guys just aren't happy over there. They're really upset on the timeframe it's taking to get the vendors back out there to get this work done. There's a lot of things cosmetically that's wrong with the building on the inside. It's got those guys pretty unhappy. And I wanna be sure that we devote our attention to those people over there in that building right now to get the, the help they need to get the building back in the right working condition. There's some safety issues on, uh, as far as door accesses and things on the wrong side. We've got, um, there's some areas of door jams, you know, it's been cut out. But they're having issues with that contractor to be able to get back in there and get those door jams fixed back up. We don't want a rough shot deal. Obviously, there's carpet coming up in the middle. It's not clean. There's some areas over there. The bad part about that is when people come back in to see it, the common Joe person think that, hey, the county's done with this thing and they've done a shoddy job, cause it's shoddy all around. I think we may have got into it too early. If I could really go back in time, we'd say, hey, man, look, we, we can't get in this thing right now cause it's just not ready to be in there. But we were forced into that because they set the court dates, right? So, we had to get in there by that time to have the court. So, I, I'm, I'm pretty frustrated with the whole situation over there. And I wanna be sure that they're getting their needs met, from the judges to Swales' office, to downstairs and justice. All, the whole group needs to be, uh, front and center on knocking out these punches and things, cause we got some stuff that's just not functional on, on how they're having to get through it. So, um, they got some, I saw one, one area where a desk is maybe put in the wrong spot as far as mounted on a wall where you go into one of the, the, the records office. There's several things that are out there that are big. One thing I wanted to see if you'd look into for me, down below where the deputies are, uh, they sitting on check inside. In the mornings, they were explaining this to me, there's sun that's just beaming directly over the top of the courthouse, and them guys are frying. I mean, they're sitting there soaking wet with sweat. I don't know if there's somewhere we can put blinds from the, the top section above, but the sun rises up, right? And it comes in, and they can't even see the people walking in. They're having to squint and hold their eyes open.
There's a screen, an exterior screen, stainless steel screen that's supposed to be applied, which that has not been installed.
It makes it hard for those guys on that same point.
And, and I've been aware of that, and I've had conversations with the judges and Larry, and I think I'm aware of most of their things, but you're, you're absolutely right. And we've, well, I've sent several letters and had conversations with the contractor about the importance of getting this...
What's their answer? What do they tell you?
Well, they're working on it, but they have expressed a couple of things. They're, you know, and, and some of it is just trying to get some of their subcontract, like the screen. The screen is, they're having trouble getting their subcontractor to finally install that, but that's...
So, there's supposed to be a screen up there, right? To block the sun coming in?
It's a stainless steel screen, yeah. You, y'all may remember, we had the same thing on the west side, but we removed that cause it was $500,000. But this one was left here because it's a two-story space that hopefully helped...
So, that would be above those windows before you walk in?
It'd be in front of, yeah, it'd be in front of the tall windows, yeah.
The tall windows at the, on the top side. So, that's coming.
Right, well, it's, yes, it's, it's there. I mean...
It's in the price.
It just hasn't been installed.
It just hadn't been installed. Same thing with the flag posts. They, I don't know, they've had the flag posts on like six months. My assumption is they're trying to get, do all that at one time with one crane, but they need to get it done. And I've emphasized that to them. I've emphasized the importance of them finishing the project, and they, you know, it's costing them money too. But just from a, like you say, a public relations standpoint, the public doesn't understand.
They don't see any of that stuff.
No, they don't.
And that's why I think it may be the right mindset, though. If we can get the wording to Slade, before even we meet with those guys tomorrow, while we can act today, to get some kind of order cut or set to those guys, placing the importance on it. Cause I'm not really to vote, to approve any other payments if we can't get the things that are, that are needing to be done, done. There's gotta be some emphasis placed on those guys to get this thing functioning. Cause our workers and the judges and lawyers and the people that are needing that building can't use it the way it needs to be used, so...
Well, I agree with that. Another issue is, is I'm not sure what the problem is, is the gates. You know, it's supposed to be secure parking. They are not operating. Uh, I don't know whether they haven't been programmed. I don't know if there's a problem. I've asked that question. I haven't gotten it. Now, we still do, as, uh...
Brian's got some people that can fix that. So, over here, that can open them gates whenever they need them open and close them.
I don't think he closed. He didn't close. He's open them for sure.
I bet they can pro, I bet they can program it.
Well, we've got, as you may remember, we've got about 100 pages of punch list items. And so, we're, we've asked them to give us, again, weekly, uh, an update on how those are coming.
Well, yeah, cause you see the windows and all. They got, they're dirty, you know, I mean, they're not, the building's not clean.
They've got another final clean. That's part of one of the things they have to do, is a final cleaning. And, and I, this week, well, Friday, I found out that the judges are planning on having an open house for the attorneys. So, I emphasized to the contractor about, about cleaning there.
A bad time for that.
Well, the timing on this has not really been good. Like you say, it probably shouldn't have been...
Yeah, we should have not opened.
But that's neither...
That's right. All right, let me ask you this. On the, on the hallways, where you walk down the hallways, there's not any markings outside showing, say, there's a restroom here, or this is a courtroom here, or... Is that supposed to be there, or was that on the design?
Oh, it should be.
If you're walking down the hall on the second floor, when you're walking down the hallway, I've looked and just see a blank naked hallway all the way down. Are there anything that comes out, say, hey, there's a restroom right here, this is a courtroom?
There are signs on all those, but they're not, they don't, they're not, flag signs. They're on, they're on each courtroom and each restroom.
So, you don't know it till you walk by it and look left or look right and see it, right?
But there's monitors that are supposed to say what courts are this way. There is a court sign, I think there is a sign on the second floor that says, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure that Chancery Clerk's office to the left and courts are to the right.
Yeah, so, so I guess when you walk to the top of the stairs, just to say you're the common Joe person, and you walk to the top of the stairs to the second floor, and you're looking for a courtroom or Larry Swales' office, you gotta go right or left. We know you gotta go left to see Swales or right to see the court or see the judge.
Once you go through, get into the corridor, there's a sign right there as you come through that door. I'm pretty sure, Daniel. I'll double check that, but I'm pretty sure.
There just needs to be some kind of notification that, hey, this is a restroom right here, or is a courtroom right here, that you can walk down to courtroom one, courtroom two, cause it's not what a person's gotta do. I mean, cause they're always confused when they walk in, right? They go right or left, and they just gotta walk down and they see the actual door itself and figure out if they're in the right spot. See, people trying to find court that winds up down in the offices, or people that wind up in the offices, wind up down at the end of the hallway where the courtrooms are. So, we need some kind of, in my mind, to see...
We, we can, I'll check into that, but each courtroom has a monitor, and there's a monitor that says, and the whole idea was to program which courts, who's...
Like, when you say a monitor, what do you mean, like a screen?
A flat screen. There's a flat screen. This, this program, this should be programmed. Uh, as you come in, it tells you where courts are, who's doing what, and then when you get up to each floor, what's going on in each courtroom.
So, when you come to the top of the stairs, you should see a monitor that says courtroom's this way.
Well, there's a signage that says that, but there's a monitor too in the lobby, and there's a monitor, I think, upstairs. And then another's a monitor on each courtroom.
A lot, a lot of the people are telling me, they get people just wandering around, can't find anything. So, there's no, I mean, so I don't know what the...
We'll, we'll look at that and see how that can be approved, because that's relatively...
I was over there this morning. I don't remember seeing a monitor. I ended up in the bathroom.
Is, were you looking for the bathroom?
I looked for Judge Roberts.
That's right, and you wound up in the bathroom, so...
But I needed to go to the bathroom. That's not a, I mean, it's not right.
And that could have been the reminder you needed, you know? It kinda got you where you need to go.
There's a lot, there's a monitor...
I'll just go.
There's a monitor in the lobby right above the gun. And now, I don't know if it's been programmed, cause last time I was there, it was blank, but there's a, there's a...
I was probably talking to somebody at that point, but when I got upstairs, I did have to go to each one and look on the door. And, and about, you know, and I got to the bathroom first, which was good.
Well, that's, that's simple enough to add, if there's not.
I didn't see a monitor upstairs.
Okay. Well, I know, I know there's one outside each courtroom, but I'll double check on, on whether there's a central monitor upstairs.
Let's, let's don't pay like $10,000 to put one on each room.
No, this, I mean, I don't know. You can just put signage.
Eventually, you'll find it, you know, the bathroom and the courtrooms.
Well, let me look what's, it's a, I think it's a relatively simple solution. I, I don't think it has to be a monitor particularly. It could be just signage, but there's, we'll look at that and see what, what needs to go.
Just if you can place the emphasis to these contractors, cause I'm gonna vote against a payment. Is it Monday, Tuesday? Tuesday?
I mean, sorry, Tuesday.
Tuesday, so, I'm gonna, but I'm just, one little road vote that's out there, but I'm gonna vote not to pay them because we can't get cooperation with our people that are working in that building, and that's what we gotta have. So, if you can relay that message to them, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
I'll do it today.
Thank you, Ms. Carl.
It usually, uh, lack of payment usually catches everybody's attention. But that's where we're at on the courthouse. Uh, any other questions on the courthouse, comments? The other project that we, the other, second item was the Community Services Building, the Oval Chantry Building. We pretty much stopped working on that because, as I understand it, is, uh, the budget is, was around $600,000 and our last estimate was $927,000. And the reason for that is because, well, there's several things. Things have been added and changed, but the main addition has been work on the first floor for the election commission. That was not, as we understand it, part of the original scope of the project, and, uh, the only way...
Say that again. The first, first floor for what? For the election commission?
Work for the election commission.
I always thought they were going to base it bottom floor.
I mean, bottom floor. That's what I'm calling it. I'm, so I'm sorry.
Okay, 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 okay.
It's lower, actually, it's the lower and upper floor, depending on which floor we come in once.
Yeah, okay.
But anyhow, that's about 200, that's almost $300,000 worth of work down there according to our estimates. Now, what my recommendation would be, if you're interested, if the board's interested, we've got two, a couple of options. We can go back and leave, just don't do anything downstairs, uh, which I think will get us close to the $600,000. Or we can bid the whole project, since we've pretty much already done all the drawings, and make the bottom floor work an alternate, which means that the board will have the option to either take, take that work or not take that work. The, uh, I do, you know, anytime you get into doing renovation like this, you know, we're fairly conservative, we think, on our estimates. I've been contacted by several contractors wanting to know what projects are coming out this fall because they're looking for work. So, we may be high on our estimate, but the problem is, we don't have any mechanical, existing mechanical, electrical drawings on this building. And the drawings we do have on the architectural part are not necessarily completely accurate. So, we're having to, we've done a lot of field dimensions, but we don't know everything in there. So, we've been pretty conservative on our estimate, I think. But that's where we're at. There's, there's no way we can get, there's not, you know, there's no way we can get to $600,000 and still do all that work down on the bottom floor, I don't think, unless the...
All right, so, so help me with the work in that building, okay? What are we planning on doing in there? I mean, how much true, how much true renovation are we trying to do?
I think that bottom floor would be fine for the corner deal, but of course, that's election commission.
But I mean, couldn't that just be painted and cleaned and then some, you know, a little bit of upkeep on that side?
I mean, like, to close in an opening here and there to separate the two.
Carl, how did you say that they weren't originally part of the scope? Cause all along, that was the intention of moving everyone over to the old courthouse.
Well, we weren't gonna do any work downstairs. If you go back and look at our estimates in 2017, you know, we weren't, they were just moving in there as is. Now, we've, we've added an office, we're, we're working an office, one for each of the five election commissioners. They wanted to, uh, they wanted, uh, that open space renovated so they can have a training area for 100 people. They wanna move their voting machines over there, which requires adding power to keep them charged up. Since they're gonna put 100 people in there, we're having to redo the bathrooms to meet, to meet codes. We weren't gonna touch those.
Yeah.
And it's just, uh, it's just, this kinda work for renovation, everybody thinks it's really inexpensive, but it's not because they have to get in there and work in tight spaces, as, for instance, the bathroom renovation. You know, they gotta tear out plumbing, they gotta tear out the slab, and they gotta come in there and reroute that, hook up to the sewer if they can, where they think it is. So, it becomes a very expensive little unit cost. Now, upstairs...
There's no restroom at all down there?
No, there are two restrooms, but they, they're don't, there's, they're single hole restrooms. They're individual restrooms, which won't meet the plumbing code particularly, but...
For five people?
This is for 100 for the training. They're talking about training people in there.
Training some, train them somewhere else, yeah.
That's, that's an option. That's more administrative, but that's, uh, so that's, that's...
How, then they're gonna get...
Let me ask you this, Carl. What if we use some of our, uh, folks, employees to do some demo?
What if we use our employees to do all of what we wanna do on the bottom floor and just bid out the rest of it?
That's certainly, I mean, that's an option.
And we can take, have them... We probably can't do that plumbing deal, but cut the concrete.
I'm, I'm not thinking that we should hold training there. I mean, you get it ready for 100 people, you gotta spend some money. We could still have training wherever. It's not but a couple of times a year, and that's not every year.
Yeah, right. Unless we miss, I mean, that's pretty much, unless I misunderstood what, what they were asking for. I mean, we've met several times in the last year, and these things have kinda been, which, it makes sense. I mean, from a functional standpoint, to have all that in one place, I understand that. It's just a matter of cost. I mean, from, from a functional and design standpoint, it makes sense.
Well, if we did the demo, how much money would it save us?
Uh, I think, let's see, I've got that. We've got demolition figured at about $40,000.
Out of 300. No, the bid was 600 and it jumped to 900 if we do this bottom. So, it's 300 for the bottom.
I was just talking about...
Well, we got the demolition, the demolition for the bottom's up at about $15,000 right now.
Is that part of the 40, or is that in the...
Yeah, that's, no, that's part of the 40. Most of the demolition's upstairs. And upstairs has pretty much stayed the same. We've added some office, we've added an office for the coroner. We, they wanted a big storage area for body bags, uh...
I still say the corner, you know, downstairs.
I do too.
Yeah, me too.
What are you gonna do, election commission?
They, they should have, right, about the...
Petition it off?
If you're not gonna do trainings.
If you petition...
They can do training at EOC.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, City Hall.
Well, petition it off. Is it room to petition off?
Yeah.
To give adequate space for the corner too?
I mean, I made it, I mean, me and Brian, we roomed it through.
Well, there's two large rooms where the files for the Chantry Clerk were, were being stored. But those were, uh, requested to store the voting machines, move them over here from, I guess, their Marquette, move them over here.
Where the file came and started laying?
Where they were. Yeah, the Chantry, the two, there's two, on the bottom floor, there was two large rooms. Uh, now, the Chantry, I'm sure, has moved most of their files out over into the new building, I would think. I hadn't looked on...
I think moving of the machines probably not a bad idea, cause I know they don't have a restroom over there at that other place, so...
You just gotta put, you've gotta add some power, uh, for those machines to be charged, and so, that may mean...
Do they have any power down there?
You got power down there, but they have, they said they've gotta have a, an outlet for every six feet or so.
You gotta have outlet for what?
They need an outlet every six feet for the machines. I don't, I'm not sure the number of machines, but they're gonna line the wall, and then they're gonna line, put them in the center. So, you've gotta have a, a power for all of that, which means adding some power, probably some circuits, uh, down there is what we've got right now. Again, I, you know, from a function standpoint, all this certainly makes sense. Not question that, it's just, it's cost.
So, what do y'all wanna do?
If you petition it off...
I think we all need to go over and look at it.
But if you petition it off, uh, is enough room to petition, put, I say petition, but a real wall? Is that what you're talking about when you say petition it off for, for the coroner and the election commission?
Yeah, we, we can add, we can add walls. We're already moving one wall for an office. Uh, we're having to move some walls for the bathroom, enlarge the bathroom.
I can kinda see why they would want the, uh, the election commissioners would want their area totally separate. I mean, where it looks like totally separate.
Yeah, and I think you can do that, because you got a backdoor.
Do you have a layout with you?
I do have a layout, and I think I passed...
Well, after our board meeting, we wanna go over and look at it and, and look at your layout. So, we can lay eyes on exactly what we're looking at.
Okay, I can, I can meet you all over there and show you what's being done.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Let's see. Any other questions on the Chantry?
Uh, probably not till we look at it.
Okay. But it's pretty, it's, it's fairly chopped up downstairs, except for where Judge Hayden had his courtroom. It's, it's pretty much open, but all, we were gonna, and then that's just mainly taking the platform out, repainting that room. I can't remember if we got, probably new carpet down there for that. But that was gonna be where they'd meet on, I guess, on election night and have their training down there, uh, was what that was for. We, we've met with the sheriff. They've requested us to look at a, a potential little storage addition over at the misdemeanor. Sheriff, if you wanna address that. We met with them. Pretty simple little metal building.
Well, in the big scheme, what it is, you know, a lot of the criminal justice forum that everybody's pushing right now, cause we've been doing it for years, you know, y'all saying everything, we, uh, have a, uh, pretty much a master carpenter down there that's probably gonna be getting out soon. Well, Barry came up with a great idea about, uh, number one, he's a very good, not only carpenter, but, well, everything, so... We're, we're looking to hire him when he gets out soon. But what we're gonna do is, uh, uh, you know, we're all about the mentoring and everything, and we need somebody to sort of watch out over that shop, you know, they build all our cabinets, the boxes for the Tahoe's and explorers, they build it all. We need more room, and then Senator Josh Hawkins said he had some money for, uh...
Two hundred or two fifty?
Yeah, yeah, for, uh, it had to be, be spent on, uh, I can't remember the term for it, uh... Yeah, for, uh, it had to be, be spent on, uh, I can't remember the term for it, uh, capital, capital improvements. So, uh, top of there, we moved something to jail and that's what we thought would be best, we could expand our wood shop, maybe shop back there.
We were, we were talking about about twelve hundred square feet to go on the west side, uh, yeah, the west side of the existing shop. It's just a metal building that's open with, with, does have a restroom in it. And I think it can be done, certainly in that amount of money, even, even if you just-
Shop over on Marquette?
No, so back to back.
Next, next to where the, you would, you would, you would go where those existing five parking spaces are to the west of the shop area, maintenance area.
And like I said, we would like the colder bathroom.
It's pretty simple. I, 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 you know, I-
Take the one out of Chancery and send it over to you.
But anyhow, I just, we've given them some preliminary concepts that I think, well, work pretty good. Again, it's simple. The idea is to just do metal siding and I, I, you know, we know what happened when we got into all that before.
I think we'll be okay now.
Yeah, I don't feel like we'll have any issues.
But it won't cost you anything, so.
Sounds good, man.
We like it.
It's easy. You can't say no to Barry at all, you know?
It may be a-
That's why the sheriff brought him in here.
Maybe we get some new solid master carpenter or something we can have.
You can't say no to three. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Might want to hire him with our building department.
The last thing I just want to make y'all aware of, last week, we did the one-year warranty review of misdemeanor facility. And, uh, there were some minor things on the inside that needed to be corrected when we looked at the site. You know, we've been having some sloughing problems there, got the contractor to come back and do some work there. We're still waiting on some final view. I think Tim and the civil engineer are going to get together and, and review that. But that, that's, uh, and then I think there's some, some future issues about maybe putting some parking over there. And I think the county, Mike in the county, I think, have looked at this, raising the road to improve some of that drainage. Because if you know, you got, you got a road that comes in from the, from the west and you got the road that comes in from the south. And they come down and meet down there at a low point and water comes down that hill. Are there any flat places in Rankin County? But anyhow.
It stands in flat places. It sits on flat places.
But anyhow, right at the lowest point, that water runs down the hill behind the, uh, the jail fenced-in yard area. And just runs and runs over that road and runs down to the detention pond. So, uh, yeah, I think in the future that would be helpful, if that road could be raised, especially if there's going to be a parking area there that, that's needed.
Hey Carl, what happened this week? Was there a line cut, water main cut? Who cut that? Was that us? Was City of Brandon?
City of Brandon, I think.
I, I wasn't aware of that.
They took out water for everybody in this building and whatever?
You know, they, they, they had a water break when we were doing the courthouse up on top there. And I'm not aware of that. That's the first I've heard of that.
I was told the line collapsed.
Collapsed? That was right there on that road, I want to share.
Friday? Was it Friday? Thursday or Friday?
It was this week.
It was this week.
It was Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking today's Monday. Rough weekend. And we had any bad week.
So that wasn't the contractor, so we just collapsed.
No, not that I'm aware of anyhow.
Glad we ain't redone that road.
No kidding, that'd been a lot.
They tore it down.
That's all I've got, unless y'all got any other questions. But, uh, I can meet you over at the Chancery building.
Alright.
Y'all have eleven, twelve? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I can't say.
Can, can you-
Slay, can you predict the time?
No, sir. I'm, I'm the worst. I'm the worst.
We'll call you.
Yeah, if you just give me like fifty, it takes me about fifteen minutes to get here.
Before we lose Carl, item A under my section of the work session agenda is something that Carl needs to be involved in. We're expecting the circuit judges at nine forty-five. So, are they here? Okay, so-
Well, let's go ahead and deal with that.
Yeah, well, and we've got Ms. Becky here, I wanted to point out to you, this is item B. So I'm not really sure exactly what's happening here, but we've got a planning permission agenda that we've kind of bypassed to let Carl-
We got people outside.
So you got, you got, it's starting to get stacked up on us, is what I'm saying. So I, I'm just giving you an itinerary.
Well, you sit there, we're supposed to hear at nine forty-five.
You've got the circuit judges and you've got your circuit clerk here and you've got your architect. So we, we kind of, I just, I'm, I'm helping-
I'm thinking, just go ahead and deal with it.
Deal with that, okay.
Yes, please.
Then he starts, oh, well, we got all these people, planning commission, and I was like, what do you want me to do?
You're the president. You're the president.
I just want you to have all the information, Mr. President.
We waited for you to get here so you could handle all that.
Court is in session?
Court is in session.
Well, I'll, I'll let the judges explain, but there's some modifications that need, that are being requested to be done to the circuit court.
Judge Jim Finger, do you mind? I, I'm not appointing you as the, as the leader there, but, uh-
Well, they were pushing, so I'll come on.
Okay, alright.
You know, this genesis obviously is because of the COVID situation. We've gone around and we've looked and we've talked to the City of Brandon and y'all are aware of the fact that, you know, we declared those courtrooms up there temporarily unfit for use during the COVID pandemic. We're going to have a jury come in next week in Brandon City Hall. We can social distance up there and have a big enough binary come in that we can social distance, be able to have some trials. We have a number of trials on the docket. This is Judge Arthur and Judge Rakers' term in Rankin County. I'm doing the same thing in Madison County, but at a livestock arena up there. But in any event, we would like to get back in our courtrooms as soon as we can. But in anticipating that and knowing how we're going to be able to use it, when we're going to be able to use it, and how long is this going to go on? Our jury boxes here in, in all of our courtrooms, jury chairs are jammed up next to each other. So much so that if you're there right now and we're sitting in that chair, we're touching each other. Uh, there's going to be some period of time where people are not going to be comfortable doing that. In fact, it's not comfortable anyway, even before the pandemic. But certainly here, after the pandemic, it's, it's, it's going to be something noticeable. And I don't know whether or not we're going to have people that are willing to come and sit that close together for what period of time? A year, two years? How long? I don't know. In Madison County, the chairs are not fixed in the jury box. And we've been able to get Plexiglas built on three sides, uh, where they're on three-foot centers. Where each chair's two foot and then there's six inches on either side. The boxes are like three foot. So we felt like that, you know, I couldn't get the Supreme Court or anybody else to approve it. But if we could get three-foot distance with Plexiglas in between and wearing masks, surely that's enough to provide safety for citizens when they come serve on the jury. They're going to be sitting there for several hours. The chairs here are so close, you, you can't get Plexiglas between them and you can't put them on three-foot spacing. And so really, that's, uh, that's what we're looking at here. We thought also during the time of the COVID where the, there's some COVID funds available, that if we're going to make this change, this is the time to do it. Where perhaps there may be some assistance with the cost, and that's what we're asking. We're asking that, uh, take a look at expanding the jury box to be able to provide, uh, in the large courtroom, three-foot spacing. That's basically twelve inches between chairs, alright? And then put Plexiglas in between those during this period of time where the pandemic is ongoing. And, and that's what we need to do to try to maintain safe environment for jurors to come and serve. In the smaller courtroom, that's going to be difficult. I, I can't remember whether it's six or eight, but it's some inches between.
Yeah, I, I think it's maybe- Six inches, I think, is what we were trying to do.
But anyway, enough to be able to get Plexiglas in between those chairs. That'll require, when we do that though, enlarging the box, that'll require some movement of the juror, the counsel tables, I think. A lot of courtrooms have it differently than ours, but it'll require some rearranging of that and the clerk's table and those are the costs. I've looked at these estimates and I don't know, I talked to Craig, our chairs are in good shape. I don't know why in the world, there may be some reason, I don't know why we would need to replace the chairs. Hopefully, we could take them up and reinstall them. Uh, and that's twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of these estimates. But, you know, I'll do, you know, whatever you want to do on that, but the chairs look like we ought to be able to use them. And that would look to me like that would cut this cost in half, uh, to be able to do that. Chairs have been there for twenty years, but people are not sitting on them every day either. So most of those chairs are in good shape. All I'm trying to do is anticipate what's going to happen from now on and how long it's going to be before people are comfortable coming in and sitting in and serving on the jury under these circumstances. Now, I've tried a lot of cases in those courtrooms and they're wonderful. I've tried cases all over the state. I love our courtrooms. The last thing in the world I want to do is mess with our courtroom. But circumstances have changed and I just, I feel like we need to do something to provide more space. We've, uh, a couple of years ago, we increased the size of one of the jury rooms by taking a little closet area. So I think the large jury room is, is certainly sufficient to be able to social distance jurors in the jury room. The, the one for the smaller courtroom, there might be some question about that. But I think, you know, with masks on and three or four-foot distance, then we ought to be able to survive with the jury rooms. But I'm concerned about the jury boxes. And also, we are, we've had some difficulty doing video conferencing where people can't be in the courtroom for whatever reason. And the Zoom, we tried to utilize Zoom conferencing and there's been some problems with, um, feedback and issues of that nature to be able to make a proper record of the proceedings. And, uh, we're, we've talked about getting an improved sound system and video system that might help us or should help us be able to conduct video conferencing. And at the same time, just make the dockets move as best we can. The evidence presentation thing that we were presenting, we've looked at that. That's too much. We're not, we're not asking for that.
I was trying to, I was just trying to find the sheet. You referenced one of the costs and I was trying to find it.
Doctor, is this the same proposal you brought to us last time about moving a wall?
You've seen, we talked about the jury box and counsel table modifications. We talked about that. Carl, remind me, was that sixty-five thousand per courtroom?
Right, and now, if, if they were done at different times, if they were done at the same time, it would be less. If you did them, but now, this, 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 this project could be divided up or even done in-house. You're talking about having the mon, the monstrosity jury box to space it out. The, the plastic, the Plexiglas, I went up in Madison County and looked at what they did up there and got, actually got a price on that. So those, those are-
How many walls would be moving?
I'm moving any walls.
That was a jury room.
That was already done, right?
We're not moving any walls. All we're doing, Daniel, is you would have to rebuild the jury box, tape it one down, because it's not big enough.
So I guess my question is, can our workers do that?
Yes, I think they can. You can, you can, uh, you know, we will put new carpet in the courtroom well because it's tearing it up. I think in Madison County, they'll, they cut some and hid some and I don't know.
They cut some carpet from under the pews and pass it, looks good to me.
But what I, the price I present was like if you be a contractor, but yes, I think you can do this. Especially some of the work I've seen with the sheriff's stuff. The talent that the sheriff currently has with some of his facilities, I think, to, to do that, if you so desire.
Here's, here's the number.
Were built up.
If, if the, if the courtroom is-
You're going to have to continue that.
Yeah.
You can't just move the chairs out.
No, you're going to have to tear it, you're going to have to rebuild that jury box.
And I'm talking about that riser too.
Right, right. But that's not, it's not really a big cost to do that, I don't think. The cost for the Plexiglas is approximately five thousand dollars per courtroom. That's what they, that's what was done up in Madison County. So it's, uh, and then, uh, you know, carpet, you have an option whether you want to re-carpet. You do have to redo the clerk's desk because the courtrooms are not wide enough to get, you're going to have to turn the attorney tables at an L angle. So that requires redoing the clerk's, the bayous, tearing out the bayous and putting clerk up there. That's, you know, I think I-
Craig, did you have a total on the sheet?
Yeah, so you, you've got, Carl broke it down by work being conducted on both courtrooms as one project or the work being done on the courtrooms separately, alright? Two different scopes. You save on mobilization if you do both courtrooms at the same time. So the, so the price, uh, the total price for doing both courtrooms under one project is a hundred and fifteen.
And that's the jury boxes?
That's actually moving, that's actually expanding the jury box. It's moving the counsel tables. It's providing new carpet for the court well area. It's providing the glass dividers. It's moving the clerk's desk. It's, there's a significant amount of work that's in this, basically fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per courtroom if you do them at the same time. It's going to cost you sixty-four grand for both, for each courtroom or a hundred and twenty-eight total if you do them separately. You lose money on, yes, you lose money on the mobilization side especially. The, the, to the judge's point of the pricing, uh, you're looking at about twenty-eight thousand dollars total for new jury chairs if you do both courtrooms. A thousand dollars per jury chair and you need fourteen of them if you're doing cap, cap, capital murder cases. Alright, so you're going to have to, you have to have two alternate jurors. So you got to have four, spaces for fourteen people. That's twenty-eight chairs total, both courtrooms, a thousand bucks per chair.
And that, that's an allowance. You may can reduce that. I think you could probably reduce that price getting it off state contractors, but we haven't.
Or if we kept the chairs.
Does, does sixty-four include new chairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that number goes down.
Everything I gave you includes new chairs. You can, you can-
So you're below a hundred thousand if we take the chairs off?
I, I believe that's correct.
Correct.
That's what's in my head.
Why would we not be able to use them?
So why don't we take the plan and get what our business department, let them tell us what they can do?
We may have to hire some, some help.
We'll hire some help out of the jail.
Well, the trustees that did the stuff out there with the- That's as good work as I've seen out there at the front of the security, in front of the courtroom. But also, I want to mention Judge Mack's courtroom is not included in this because most of his cases are six-person juries. And he can skip a chair in here, so he can social distance, uh, without having to take chairs out and move chairs.
That's right.
But he would want his courtroom included when we move to the audio video.
And keep that in mind. This pricing we just talked about does not include any audio visual upgrade. It's a separate deal.
Do it so that we can have inmates still in jail, not have to come over?
Or either witness.
Or possess culpable, but you can't bring him.
We have not been given authority from our Supreme Court to do felony guilty pleas or felony trials without the defendant being present. But they are studying that right now as to whether or not they will allow that. But so Judge Mack, for example, can do initial appearances and preliminary hearings without bringing them over. But for the rest of us, also, it's for civil matters and civil hearings where people and witnesses and lawyers don't have to come into court. That they can be, we can be in five different places. If they ever get to where, especially, I mean, if they don't hurry up and do it, it's going to be of little use unless the pandemic continues. Where you don't have the prosecutor, the clerk's office, and Bayless and everybody in the courtroom exposing themselves as we go through guilty pleas and motion hearings and civil and criminal cases. That we can distance by the judge being in the courtroom with the court reporter and still be able to hear and see all these people from the various places. We tried to do that a couple of times and the feedback was just impossible to deal with, with a plus the sound system.
Do we not, what we put in our budget didn't allow for that and didn't work or what?
We hadn't done any.
We just hadn't got there yet.
We've not done anything.
We, we don't have a, we don't have any system. All we had was a P A and N T O M system. We were trying to do it with laptops.
Steve, I, I got you, I understand. I understand.
I think Chancery, you know, it's, it's got a system, but ours, all we had was a P A system and we were trying to do it by laptops. The audio video system that we're talking about has got audio and video. And then we would simply, uh, there was a proposal on there that would have a system, uh, for like thirty-nine thousand dollars or something. And it was- thousand dollars or something and it was going to charge us a hundred and eighty dollars a month to do video conferencing and, and I think the judges, we don't, we agree, we don't need that. We just need that lower system with, with the increase that's got video and better audio and that we'll do the rest of it by Zoom.
Judge, do you know if this, the pricing that they have in front of them attached to their agenda is seventy-nine thousand six hundred and twelve, is that the, is that the?
No, that's.
That's the full price for the full system? Has that been modified to your knowledge?
It has been. It has. They modified the evidence presentation, but it's still right at forty thousand dollars. And they, they modified the audio video conferencing and they were going to give us a fifteen thousand or five thousand dollars per courtroom break, but it's still over thirty-five thousand dollars. And we ain't asking for that. The one that we're back to, and I don't know that they've given any discount on this, this is the one, the same youth court, the system, maybe a little bit of an upgrade from that. It's thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars was the last quote that I had from that system and Judge Mack.
So, that's marked the difference.
For both? That's for two courtrooms?
That's per courtroom. For three courtrooms.
So, you'd be about forty thousand.
Forty grand, thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but that's different than what you have in front of you is my point. You don't have that information.
So, what we got is like eighty thousand.
That's what they, seventy-nine.
I got evidence presentation.
Well, that included, at that time, that included all of it.
And that was per courtroom and we quickly decided.
I'm good.
I was going to say, we can tell you one other thing. We, we're good as far as seating goes, but when I have eminent domain juries, Jor, maybe with, they have to have twelve persons. So, but we can work that out. I can make sure and schedule those at a time when the modified courtroom is available and we won't have to go down to City Hall for that. But still, it's a, it's pretty, it's pretty important.
Do you still need the plexiglass?
No, not in my courtroom. But if I had an eminent domain jury with twelve people too often, I'd have to.
Well, while we're doing the plexiglass, if we were to put it there.
Well, there's not room for it.
I thought your chairs were six inches apart.
No.
Oh, okay.
They may be six centimeters apart. They're not, I mean, literally, they're millimeters. If you have a fairly large person sitting in two of them, they're going to get to be really friendly. I mean, they're going, a lot of touches, so, no, it just.
While they're never touching each other.
You know, nobody ever invades them.
Can we get our guys and the sheriff together, see what we can do it for and not make a decision today as to we're going to bid this out or not? Maybe next week, make the decision? I mean, I think the whole board here wants to do whatever we can to help. Right. But it's the most economical way that we can get there.
We're trying to get it done in time to at least have a shot at somebody cares money.
Well, I don't know. We've turned our budget in.
Yeah, but, but we've turned our first, we've turned our first tranche in. We're not limited to just one ask, but the, the issue, I'll have more to say about that shortly. I, I am interested to know, do y'all, do y'all feel strongly about doing this as one complete package or motion?
I'd rather do the whole thing as one.
Yeah.
Me too.
Go for it, do the whole thing.
The thought process that I have is if y'all are, if y'all believe that the request with respect to the audio visual is valid and we need to do it.
Yeah, I think, I do too. I think it's separate.
Let, let's go on and, and get that underway because there's going to be a process to acquire that.
Our people are not going to have anything to do with that.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be at a number where I'm fairly confident we're going to have to do two quotes and, and look at how, how we address all that. We have one quote. We're going to have to make sure that we can find another quote. It's, it's at that point. Thankfully, it's been reduced so that it's not a bid project. So, it should go fairly quickly once we get to that point, but if y'all are amenable to it, I would say let's go on and act on the audio visual request and get that moving.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I make a motion that we take bids on the audio visual for the three courtrooms?
Yeah, so I, I think you, you've got potential action already under item A of the work session agenda. You've got potential action already, so we don't have to add anything. So, Steve's motion would be to act on the audio visual request.
For three?
Yes, sir. For all three courtrooms.
All right, motion by Steve, second by charity, and discussion. Paul in first, say I.
Thank you, judges. And I think where we are is, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead.
On the other, the construction, if it's okay with the judges, I would like for Brian and our maintenance guys to get together and see if we can do it and if it's going to be more economical if we do it. But I, I think one way or the other, we really need to do it.
It's going to happen. We just want to look at economic.
We can make that decision by next week.
Just a few days.
Lieutenant Raven out here has told us, subject to the sheriff confirming it, that he's got wood butchers over there in their shop.
Yeah.
That can make anything as nice as other folks can. So, unless there's a problem using inmate labor for some technicality, he believes we can do that and get materials and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Sheriff, that's not right. He is.
They will be here, won't they? They're going to be leaving.
He can make sure of that. We're going to add a year to your sentence.
Ask the judge how long the sentence is.
We are, we are being recorded.
That's right. What would you say, Sheriff, about the main warrant? The main warrant isn't all getting out of here, but that's one we'd like to hire. Speak the same.
Yeah, we can, we can probably hire him.
Anyway, the work they've done so far is you can't notice any difference.
It's skin against.
So, thank y'all. If y'all need anything else from us.
Appreciate it, man. We'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who, who's this guy just came in? I thought that was John coming in in shorts.
Clip flops.
All right, we're going to get back to our normally scheduled events now. We're going to, at this time, call our planning commissioner.
Hey, Becky.
Becky, did you need anything else?
Yes, Miss Becky's here, Brian.
Me. Oh, all right.
Y'all get that a beat.
I'm not asking for anything, but you said.
I thought you were with them.
No.
Ms. Becky and I have, well, let me, let me paint a little bit larger picture. Bless her heart, Ms. Becky can't stand, but every, every couple of years, she's got to get sued by some big federal cases related to an election deal. Y'all remember back in the sixteen election, we had to deal with True the Vote. It's actually back in the fourteen election, but we, we had a lot of federal litigation that sprung up because of voter practices and whatnot. Since then, we've gotten new voter equipment, but this election cycle with the, with the virus, we're dealing with the potential that our request for absentee balloting is going to explode. We anticipate that there will be a lot of absentee balloting and so Ms. Becky is here to talk to you guys about a couple of different things that relate to specifically absentee balloting and how we want to try to handle that. So, I don't want to step on her toes. You go ahead and then I'll, I'll jump in and tell you some additional details.
Okay. The last big election that we had, we had over six thousand absentee ballots. That's people that come into our office and vote as well as the ones that we mail out. This year, the Secretary of State's office is telling us to expect double to triple that amount. So, we feel like we will have anywhere from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand because we have more voters now than we did four years ago. So, we are looking for a tremendous amount of absentee voting. So, you want to get the?
Yes, ma'am. There's a few different things that we have to deal with about that. Number one is when you have absentee ballots, there's a different method by which those have to be incorporated into your election results. I'll start there. What that's going to necessitate is that, and by way, by the way, that the law has not been changed to this point and so we're operating under a system that we are advised by the Secretary of State requires that all absentee ballots will not be counted, cannot be counted until the polls have closed.
At seven o'clock.
Yep. So, if we have fifteen thousand absentee ballots that have been cast, all of which, by the way, have to go through a vetting process. They all have to be looked at by the election commissioners, by a specific committee that's designed to make certain that those have been cast properly, that they've been filled out correctly, that they have the required detail on the outside envelope. There's a lot involved in that. Those all have to be reviewed. We understand that the review process can be underway on the election day. It's the counting process that cannot, and so what that's going to mean is that those absentee ballots will have to be accounted for after the polls close. We anticipate that if we are required, if we're going to be required to go through our normal process, the process we have in place now to open them, see them, and get them scanned, it's probably a two-day process.
At least.
To do it the way that we do it now. In the neighborhood of about two days.
That means that we would not have results on the election, the night of the election. It would be a couple of days later before we would have any results.
We, we wouldn't be alone in that, by the way, because there are, well, every jurisdiction in Mississippi that's burdened under the same responsibility. Of course, if you're in one of our low population counties, you're not that concerned about it. You can get them counted fairly quickly. There's just not that many voters. But when you're dealing with, with probably sixty to seventy thousand votes in a presidential election, if not more, seventy-five thousand maybe, possibly more, with, with some twenty thousand of that being absentee, that's going to be a big ask. There's a way to get them counted that is much more streamlined, that would reduce that timeframe to get them counted down, but there's a cost associated with it. Our election equipment supplier provides a high-speed counter that we can employ, but they're pretty proud of it. You're looking at a cost of about thirty thousand dollars.
And that's to rent it for the one night.
To rent it?
Yes. To buy it is about eighty thousand, isn't it?
That's correct. You get, you get a person, by the way, from our vendor, you get, you get an actual person live and in person that is here overseeing the use of that piece of equipment.
But now, they've told us that it would scan six thousand an hour. So, that way, we would have the results hopefully within three to four hours from the time the polls close.
Instead of three days.
Yeah, instead of three days.
Keep in mind that our equipment, the equipment that we have, depending on how it's coded.
Let's just see how the election's going and make that decision.
Yeah.
When, when you push the ballot through, keep in mind, it's set up with parameters. So, if there's something going on with that ballot that's marking correctly, there's a skew.
An overvote or an undote.
It's going to spit it out and not count it. This is why we're telling you that this is a, a two to three day process. We don't have a way to separately code the absentee ballot portion of that count. They're counted in accordance with the same system that we have. So, however it's coded to take the ballot at the polling place is how the absentee ballots are going to be taken.
I thought the absentee, all the ballots actually went out in the box.
They've changed that. That, that changed this year. They do not go to the polls. All the ballots stay in my office.
Oh.
So, that, that is good.
That they're not going there.
That they're not going out. But that means that we potentially could have fifteen thousand ballots in my office and the resolution board will have to come in. They could, they're allowed to come in at seven o'clock the morning of the election to begin processing, but not counting. They can start checking everything.
I do. The thirty thousand that it would take to rent that, we do have, have a funds available. We would have to pay for it upfront, but I feel sure it is an allowable cost that we could get reimbursed on.
On have a.
Because anything, I don't have a money, anything that has to do with the conduction of election.
If the machine costs eighty and they rent it for thirty, it'll take them long to pay for that machine.
Doesn't, doesn't at all.
The reason why we said rent it is because we know this year's going to be huge. Next year will not be.
Right.
Then the next year might be big, but you also have to pay a yearly maintenance fee on it if you buy it. So, we felt like cost-wise, it'd be better to rent it this one time and then see what it is later.
I agree with that. We'll, then we'll have to service it and maintenance it and.
Yeah.
So.
It sits up and just.
That, that's the need. The reason we're standing in front of you guys is that we know, we have heard loud and clear that getting election results timely is a critical component part of what this board wants. We want Rankin County to be at the lead in the state of getting our election results turned around, accurate and fast. That, so we have heard that message and you needed to know today, as soon as possible, that the fast part of that is going to be very difficult if we're having to deal with twenty thousand absentee ballots.
Oh, it's going to be unbelievable whenever people start calling me saying that Adams County, Cleveland County, this county, that county, Smith County, every county around you except that.
See, and people don't understand, those counties are so much smaller than us. Donkey Public don't understand that.
They don't.
Yeah.
So, that's the ask.
I mean, even if we do this thirty thousand deal, we still going to have the same issue.
We won't be three days behind them.
Well, but we won't be ahead of them either.
Yeah, I don't, I understand. But three days.
We might be.
Well, I mean.
Let me, let me also say, well, and I'm holding out hope that somebody is, the lightbulb's going to go off over somebody's head and start asking the question, why are we not counting absentee ballots until seven o'clock? Because, by the way, they did change the part of the law that says that an absentee ballot is not a final vote.
No, it is.
Now, it is. They changed it so that they say it's a final vote. So, you don't have the problem of having to hold your absentee to see if the voter's going to actually show up at the poll. He voted, she voted. It's over. There ain't no voting at the poll. So, why are we waiting to count at seven o'clock?
Why can't they, how can you police that?
We've tried, trust me. We, the, in the beginning, we were under the impression, the circuit clerks were under the impression when they changed it, that all the ballots stayed in the clerk's office and that it was a final vote. We just assumed that meant we could start counting them at seven o'clock that morning.
Start counting.
And, but then when they came out with the House bill, it said, no, no vote can be counted until seven o'clock.
They come in a week before and do an absentee ballot. What stops them from voting in their precinct during the election though?
And how do you? The poll pad.
The poll pad.
It's going to take them off when you put.
It's got a mark as being absentee.
It shows they've already voted absentee when it pops up. So, the election worker will tell them, you've already voted. Yes, I, I see here that you've already voted. If, I believe, I'm, I'm getting out of my lane a little bit, but to, to your, your next question, what did the voter says? That's an error. I didn't vote. Well, we will let them vote affidavit. And then, at that point, the vote's preserved and if it's, if the resolution board authorizes the counting of the affidavit ballot, then it's dealt with that way. So, there are fail safes in place that don't run counter to the right to vote.
So, at seven o'clock in the morning, you can start vetting them?
Right.
Can you get them vetted in twelve hours? But even though it takes three days?
Well, okay, the election commissioners will appoint a resolution board. They will have anywhere from nine to eleven people on that board. It has to be an uneven number. So, we're hoping that between those eleven people, they could get them all vetted by seven o'clock that night. What takes the time scanning them, even if we have five scanners set up, somebody has to be standing there and feed them in one at a time. You can't just put a stack in. You have to feed them in one at a time.
You've got to vet them one at a time, don't you?
What now?
You've got to vet them one at a time.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I don't see how it takes three times longer to count them than it does, to me, the vetting would take longer.
Okay, because with the machine, you put it in, if anybody overvoted or undervoted, it sends it back out, you have to push a button and send it back in again. So it takes, you know, time to do all of that.
That same, that thing, same thing show up if you bet, voted absentee, and then you went, and you were, say, from District One, and you went to, to Hines County and voted again?
Well, you're not on their roll.
I know, well, I know you're not on their roll, you're not supposed to be on their roll.
There's nothing to keep them going over and voting at somebody else's, or even if they're registered.
But we don't have any control over that.
No, I understand, no, I know you don't, I'm saying there's something, there's something. I know somebody voted Madison and Brinkin.
So that's the issue with the, the high-speed scanner for the absentee ballot issue. The second issue that we want to make you guys aware of is that with that many absentee voters, we are anticipating a significant presentation of physical bodies coming to Ms. Becky's office, which is not possible to keep separation, it's not, we won't be in compliance with anything if they're all coming to Ms. Becky. So we have asked the question, the city has made available to our use, should we choose to use it, the Brandon Library, which is currently not being used for anything, for a satellite location to allow for absentee balloting. So you would have both the circuit clerk and a satellite location at the city library to conduct absentee balloting. The Secretary of State's office has been asked about this, they have indicated their approval of this, as long as the supervisors authorize the use of this satellite location as an absentee polling.
As long as it's qualified as a satellite office for the circuit.
They have my choice. There's no way to keep them safe in your office.
That's right, that's right.
Be lined all out on the sidewalk trying to get in.
Yeah.
How, how long do you have to man it?
Okay, that, that's another thing I want to ask you about. We start absentee voting face-to-face the twenty-first of September, and it goes through October the thirty-first, which is a Saturday at five o'clock. We have to be open that last Saturday from eight to five. The twenty-fourth, we have to be open from eight to twelve. So if we have two, that's thirty-five voting days that we have to have it manned, thirty-five days. Okay, if we have two offices, obviously they have to be manned, plus we have all of our regular work to do in addition to the voting. So I am asking if I can hire possibly ten extra people to help us with the absentee voting. That way we could have five at our site and five at the other site.
What kind of, what kind of money are you talking about?
Well, I would like to be able to offer them ten dollars an hour, and some of them that I've talked to are willing to do it on a volunteer basis, so we might not be paying all ten people. But some people are younger, you know, and they've got childcare or whatever, you know, so they want to get paid, and I understand that. I had read something, and I don't know what, that they said twelve fifty an hour.
Twelve, I believe it was, up to twelve an hour.
Uh-huh. Now, what was that, was that some of the cares money or something?
No, that's some additional funding that can be coming through with Senate bill, and I don't know the number of it, but it will allow for additional workers, but it's up to twelve.
Okay, that we could pay them up to twelve dollars an hour, okay. And I don't know.
Is that recoup?
Yes.
Do the cares, is that?
I believe it's going to be.
No, it's going to be.
Secretary of State is actually received that allocation directly. It's cares money, but it went straight to SOS, and I, I'm assuming that the process is that we make applications to Secretary of State, or we demonstrate expenditure to them, and they, and then they reimburse us from those funds.
Well, that's curious, why are you going to get five additional people in your office if there's a?
Okay, okay, because a lot, lot, lot of stuff is done behind the scenes. We have a lot of work that we have to do, like with the absentee balloting, like, I mean, the, the mail-in vote stuff. So I would put an extra person in my office to help me with that. So that'd be one spot. Becky Pouncy will be at the library, so we probably would have two people in her office doing paperwork, because anytime somebody votes absentee, we have to, we run a report every night, we have to match up every absentee ballot with that report. So that can be done in one of the back rooms. So we, we would just have to have people spaced out. We probably are going to have to have somebody at the door as a, I don't want to say a guard, but I mean, to, to let the people in, you know, we can't just open up the doors and everybody come piling in. So we'll have to have somebody like a monitor or something standing, so that would be one of the employees standing at the door, you know, let six people come in, and when those six go out, let six more people in.
So is all this going to be reimbursed to us?
We depend on it.
We're hoping it is. It sounds like the high-speed scanner qualifies for have a money. It sounds obvious to me that additional personnel to cover absentee balloting is handled through the Secretary of State's cares distribution, so.
Well, I mean, the have a money is just our money to spend, we could spend on any voting stuff, you know, so.
Yeah, as long as it qualifies, that's correct.
I just ain't crazy about the scanner, but I get the need of the personnel.
Well, the, the scanner, like I said, scanning six thousand an hour, we would be done that night.
I don't know what's crazy about it, Jay, but really, I don't know, I don't know the choice. I mean, we do it, like I say, we called it enough problems even in, before, because we weren't getting it turned out.
That's right.
You know?
All right, come forward.
What is the spike in absentee voters?
Okay, the.
I understand the mail-out, there, there's been public sites on TV every time you turn it on, but the absentee.
Okay, in Mississippi, you have to have a reason to vote absentee. Well, most people that come into the office, they say they're over sixty-five or they're going to be out of town. Okay, now this time, anybody can come in and say that they are afraid of the COVID and do not want to stand in line, and they can vote absentee.
So they stand in lines to absentee vote.
Right, but the, they're assuming our lines will not be as long as the lines at the polls, but, but that's why we think that there will be a lot more, and, and especially the mail-out, I mean, we've already got over six hundred requests for absentee ballots, and we won't even have the ballots till the end of the month. So we are going to have a tremendous number of ones to mail out, but we're also expecting many, many, many people to come into the office and vote.
All right, Slade, what do you need, do you have most of that?
Yeah, I do, but I, I want to clarify one thing, because Ms. Becky, as hip, as up-to-date as she is, she, she wasn't aware that as of this morning, a chancellor in Hines County actually entered an order on the ACLU case that was filed, the Oppenheim case that was filed, the order's been entered today, that essentially it, it split the baby, it did not give the ACLU what they wanted. And so the truth of the matter is that there are actually more regulations before someone who is expressing concern about Wuhan, there, there's actually some more regulations that I will visit with Ms. Becky about, assuming that that case is not going to be appealed. At this time, we don't know if it will or will not be, the ACLU could appeal that case, but I, I don't know if they, they will appeal that decision or not, but as it stands right now, it doesn't appear that just simple concern or fear over the virus is going to trigger the eligibility to vote absentee. All right, that's what I'll say at this point, we anticipated that that result would be different than that, given the venue.
Sure did.
But your darn lawyers in the back, back there are really good. And even with that venue, they got the right result in, in that venue, which is kind of strange, so.
But, yeah, but I'm taking, last time, we had over six thousand, and we didn't have any kind of COVID thing, because practically everybody in Rankin County says they're going to be out of town on the day of the election, so they get around it one way or the other.
They'll get around it. We will have the same number of absentees, it'll just be a different box, it's a check, okay? So here's what I need, Daniel's question was, what do you need? I, I, I need y'all to tell me what you want. There's two different things that we need today that would be helpful. One is authorization to establish the satellite location for absentee balloting at the library, and to communicate that request to the city of Brandon so that their board can act on it next Tuesday night, okay? That's one. Two is authorization for us to rent the high-speed scanner through Hard Intercity at their pricing, and to, and to initiate the process of getting that secured so we have it on site.
And my people.
Yes, and, oh, forget that thing.
Yeah.
And authorization, circuit clerk, to hire additional staffing, up to ten, up to ten, is ten in the?
I, I think so, now, I may have to come back and say we need more, because we just don't know what, what to even expect, we don't know.
Can I, can we just suggest, can I just say, not more than fifteen, can we say that, that she's, she's authorized to hire not more than fifteen? We think she's going to be able to keep it at ten. She's going to pay them not more than the eligible amount under the Secretary of State's cares money, whatever that eligibility is, that's the cap that they can be paid per hour, I think it's twelve, but we'll check that. That'll be the cap that she can pay on that, and she would be encouraged to use as many volunteers as she can.
Right, and if she needs more than fifteen.
No, really.
Other people get paid.
Believe it or not.
You're going to pay them all.
Yeah.
Well, but some people.
Do you need to add that to the agenda, motion to add that to the agenda?
Yeah, I think I've got action on there.
It says just discuss your options.
Okay.
I have one question, as far as those employees go, is that, do poll workers qualify, do they do that?
No, no, because you cannot handle the absentee ballots and do the poll work.
That's what I figured.
It has to keep, yeah, so the poll workers cannot do it.
All right, so Slade, my motion's to add it.
Add that, yes, please.
Those three items that Slade listed out.
All those items, all right. Can you make a motion to add those items?
Second.
Second by Jared, all the people say aye? Aye, aye, aye.
So then motion approved all three of those items.
I've got one more question.
All right.
And I may just need to talk to them.
Let's get them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I heard what you made.
Yeah.
All right, you made, you made a motion, I'll second.
All right, motion by Daniel's approve everything, second by Jared, approve everything, discussion, all the people say aye?
Aye.
All right, aye's a.
Okay, the question I have, and I may just need to talk to Laura Wanda later, as far as paying these people, do I turn in their hours to the board and the board pay them, or do I pay them and then y'all reimburse me if, if I don't have enough in my funds? How, how does that work, you know?
They say they could be handled like a poll worker turned into us and us make payment.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, okay. All right, I just didn't know how to, to tell them.
You might have to communicate to them that they'll be able to lag.
Yeah, that's fine, uh-huh. Yeah, so I'll get with you later to find out exactly how to do that, okay?
Becky, what are we paying the poll workers this time?
I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, do you know? But then I think they also approved an extra fifty dollars a day hazard pay for some of them, I'm, I'm not sure.
Oh, have they?
Yeah.
Well, because we maxed out of what we legally pay on that, we were maxed out, that's what I explained to them, yeah.
Yeah, but then they came up with this extra fifty dollar hazard.
Well, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. And my workers don't get the fifty dollar hazard pay. That's just the election workers.
Well, that may encourage some of them to come back and work.
The only complaints I've heard from poll workers is the time it takes, I know this last go-round, because with COVID or we were able to cut the check faster on the last election for, for some reason.
It, it, it doesn't have to do with that, it's just a matter of timing when the election commissioners get the sheets to us and the next available document that we have coming out.
So it's the election committee?
They really want their check at the end of the day.
They really do, I mean, or within a week.
But they're, they're, yeah, all that hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, that is, thank y'all all very much.
Now, it's going to be a hundred and seventy-five.
And they really will be calling you.
All right, so unless there's some other polling that needs to be done right now, we're going to move on our planning this minute. All right, so I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, all the people say aye? Aye, 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 old business?
There is no old business to discuss.
All right, new considerations?
Okay, so the first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Michael Liberto at nineteen oh-two Highway four-seventy-one. He's seeking the conditional use permit to place an ice vending machine on this property. It's located on the east side of Highway four-seventy-one. It's a one-point-nine-seven acre parcel that's Zone C-two. That's an aerial view, and you can see the existing building, that's the old Mitchell Jones Seafood Restaurant. This is their site plan, and the yellow box is the approximate location, it'll be placed on the south side of that parking lot. The unit is approximately ten feet tall, four feet wide, and four feet, four feet deep. It will be placed on a ten-by-ten concrete slab, and the unit will exceed wind speeds of a hundred and fifty mile per hour. These are views of that property. And then these are surrounding properties. They do know about the, the conditions may be placed on it, and they understand all of that. Reagan Cooper is here today, if y'all have any questions, she's representing Mr. Liberto.
So what is going to happen with the old Glenn Walden's building?
Ms. Cooper is opening a dance studio in the old Glenn Walden's restaurant.
And you're just going to have one of those things out there?
On the parking lot, yeah, it'll be kind of out from that light pole in this area right in here.
You know, we had the request for the marathon across the, across the way, we, we introduced the significant conditions, we have to put in the conditions, we put those, and those are available for Ms. Cooper to review as well. I, obviously, I'm not going to give you guys, and y'all got a public area that'll have to be conducted in whatever conditions you want to establish, you have the flexibility to do that. My assumption was that y'all were going to try to be somewhat uniform in your, in, in your condition, so I would encourage her to make sure that she has access to the conditions that were put on the one across the street, so that she's familiar with that.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, set the poll here?
I make a motion, we said it, but then I have, I have some discussion.
Second. Motion by Steve said it, second by Daniel, any discussion?
Yes. We just approved one in one of our previous meetings across the road from this one. I think you were here when we did that and heard the discussion. Do you have a picture, Renee, of what was submitted to us on the other one?
Oh, on the other one? I could get it if you need it real quick.
Well.
Jay's got one down there beside his computer, don't he?
It's larger than this one, this is a smaller unit.
I'm not, I'm not, that's not the way the picture looked.
No, that was a little different, yeah, that one was a little different.
Yeah, but that's the one that the other one, if the marathon's going to pass.
No, I, I saw the one that had brick around it.
Oh, no, no, sir, no, it's not going to have brick around it, it's just.
I saw one that was maybe.
Oh, that was something that, yeah.
Jay sent that out.
That's in Pearl, the city limits of Pearl.
I was really sending out to show you all the trash around it, because they did have a dumpster.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, we'll be almost exactly the same, for me, and, and since this one's in my district, we're going to be, if it gets approved, it'll be the same as across the road, or better. We like, you know, we like to be a little better.
All right, you have discussion?
I think I'm gay.
No discussion, all the people say aye?
Aye.
Aye's a, okay. Next item?
Okay, the next item is a conditional use permit for Andrew Forrest on Trickenbridge Road. He's seeking the conditional use permit to build a shop with living quarters on this property, it's located on the south side of Trickenbridge Road. It's a twenty-five-point-seventy-six acre parcel that's zoned RE-one, that's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan, now, the RE-one doesn't allow for a metal exterior, and this will have a metal exterior. It's going to be located on this part of the property. These are the elevations of that building. And we.
Could you back up to that other thing? What is this?
This is his elevation showing what it will look like. Now, it calls it hardy board siding, but he's putting metal, it will have a metal exterior on it, and it's just a shop with living quarters, and it'll have.
A shop with living quarters, and RE-one.
Right, he's asking for the conditional, you used to have the metal on it, because it will have everything that a house has, so this is what, it'll be a dwelling, actually. And we had met with him in a pre-development conference earlier, and I think Steve had told him that he would like to see him have his permit to build a primary home on this property within two years and get a CO, and then at that time also get a change of occupancy permit to convert this to a shop only, and he understood that.
He's going to live in it, then he's going to convert it back to a shop.
Right, when his primary residence is built.
A lot of guts now throwing away material.
Well, you know, in order for it not to qualify as a dwelling, you have to remove one of those items, a dwelling is bedroom, bathroom, and a kitchen.
How, how large is the living area?
Okay, so the.
Seems like to me it was way out of balance.
So the living quarters are going to be a thousand square feet of living space and fourteen hundred for the shop area.
It's a twenty-four hundred.
I would, you know, I'd be okay with skipping or stepping over the little, the regulation that you can't have a shop before you have a house, and knocking out the, the thousand square foot of living space, I'm afraid, now, I'm just afraid that that's never going to change, and you've got more shop, it's really a shop, I mean, when you have more shop than you have living space. I guess we can set it and see what comes out of this, and make that decision at the other end, but you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm really concerned that.
You want it to be less living space?
No, no, no. Because I'm, I, I'm really afraid that there's a high percent chance that that's gonna be permanent.
It's gonna be permanent.
And we're gonna have a, a thousand square foot home in a shop.
Yeah.
And.
Is it facing Trickenbridge? Is it off?
Uh, you saw, this is the site plan right here, so it's a odd shaped lot.
I can't even see where is Trickenbridge?
Out here.
No, I mean, embarrassing that.
Oh, you asked me, right, right out here. This will be Trickenbridge. This is gonna be the access. And that's where he's gonna put this building. I'm not exactly sure where he had plans to build a house.
I don't know. I ain't crazy about this.
I don't, I don't hear. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Living in those metal buildings, you know, this is somebody building a shop and going to have, just live up in there.
They're built the same way though.
For our property values.
They're built the same way.
Huh?
You talking about building a, a barn house or it's gonna be, is it, or what, what do you say?
That's just gonna be a metal building. That's it.
But it, if a barn house is built similar in that it starts out with a metal building.
Right.
It, it's gonna be wood framed. It's just gonna have the metal on the outside of it. It's not a true metal building, but the fact that it has a metal exterior, that's not, that's not allowed in the RE one outright. They would have to ask for.
They're not gonna have chicken house trusses.
Okay, they don't, they're not, yeah, they are. Well, you got to have them stamped.
Actually, we have had some others out that way that have been approved for the same thing in years past, a little further down the road.
That one had a bracing.
That small of living quarters.
Well, I, I wouldn't say they were that small of living quarters. They, they had the metal is what I'm saying. The metal exterior.
Are you saying they're gonna have to frame it just like a house?
It, it would be and then they're just gonna put the metal exterior.
Wood trusses, that's what I thought.
The only issue is the metal exterior, you know, um.
Yeah.
I, I'd say, set it. In the meantime, talk to them about our concerns, my concern of the shop area exceeding the living area because what we got is a shop. Majority of your under roof is a shop and not a home.
Right.
In our regulations, we do have a reg that says you can't build a shop unless you have a home. And, uh, we're building.
In this instance, the home will be there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, uh, I mean, if.
My position is exactly like yours, Steve.
If, if the residential part exceeded the square footage of the shop part, I would, I'd like to go out there and drive by and make sure where it sits is not gonna be on, I mean, I, I can see that, but it's really borderline.
Yeah, and in winter months, it probably will be visible from the road, um, you know, even though it's a good bit of property, twenty-five acres.
What, does he got a, is it, I mean, is he talking about some painted, painted tin or he's talking about just straight up tin?
Just metal.
We don't know.
I, I don't know if it's gonna have a color. I don't think he gave us any kind of color rendering. Uh, this is all he gave us. But I can definitely find that out, uh, before the next, before the public hearing.
It needs to have more decorative things that make it look like a house than just straight galvanized tin. And the living portion needs to exceed the shop portion for us to put this in residential area.
All right, so you want to set the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to set it.
Motion set the public hearing?
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have.
All right, next is a rezoning request for Jim Wyatt at three eighty-nine Kirsch Road. Uh, Mr. Wyatt is seeking to rezone a five point eight oh acre parcel on Kirsch Road. This property is located on the north side of Kirsch. It's currently zoned A one and he is requesting to change the zoning to RE one. Again, it's five point eight oh acres. That's an aerial view. Uh, this is a plat, uh, just showing the, uh, layout of the lots. He wants to subdivide the property into four lots. Um, his daughter plans to live in an existing house shown on lot one, this one. And then he will plan, he's planning to build a house on lot two and sell lots three and four. Uh, his application stated that the minimum, uh, square footage on the homes would be sixteen hundred square feet. All of his lots front on the public road and they do meet the hundred foot minimum lot width.
I make a motion to set it.
All right, motion by Brad says, second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See how easy that was?
Well, only because I forgot to ask for your comments.
The last item is a conditional use permit for Rivers Market at forty-six fifty-six Highway eighteen. Uh, Rivers Market is seeking the conditional use permit for a farmer's market with yard art and Mexican pottery. Uh, this property is located on the west side of Highway eighteen. It's the old Rock Hill Road Baptist Church, uh, property. Uh, it's a total of one point oh six acres zoned A one. That's the aerial. And then, um, this is a view of that property. Mr. Rivers plans to construct porches along the front and down each side of the existing sanctuary, which would just be that front portion, not, you know, where it goes out. It would go across each side and along the front. He will display the yard art and the pottery on the porches. Uh, they may locate a gift shop on the inside of the existing sanctuary and, uh, the porches will be secured with a decorative wrought iron type fence. These are adjoining properties.
Jay, you got any questions? I'll make a motion to set it.
Second.
All right, motion by Brad says, second by Jared. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to throw a few kinks in it. Not really.
All right, go ahead. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have. Okay. Site plan architecture review?
We don't have any today.
All right, Greg, you're up.
Yes, sir. Item A in the nuisance property considerations is the William and Valerie Staffer nuisance property at three twenty-seven West Petros Road. This District One property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate with photos.
All right, so we received a complaint on this property in January of twenty twenty. It was in regard to rubbish and debris and operable vehicles and appliances. The mail was sent. Uh, I think they did receive that and they called in February and asked for more time to clean due to the rain. These are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
I'm William Staffer. I've been there twenty years.
And I'm Valerie Staffer.
That's White Valerie. And the whole reason why I'm here is because of a personal vendetta by Mr. Paul Smith. And matter of fact, he was laughing at me this morning when I was getting in my truck to come down here. I don't know how much longer I'm gonna be able to put up with this because this has gone too far. Now, the problem I have with my property, I'm in the bottom. I have called Rankin County several times about fixing that ditch. When I moved in there, it cost me twelve thousand dollars to fix that ditch in my property. All right, what happened with all the, the dirt pits on the other side over there, that hundred and twenty acres across the road from me drains. It comes right down the north side of my property. It runs east. The big cupboard on the road that comes down beside it, sixty inch cupboard, stopped up with trees, logs. I had to go back there, me and my neighbor behind me, and cut it out ourselves. All right, now, I had a camper in the back that I couldn't get out. All right, I got it out. And if you'll go back and look at my backyard, matter of fact, Mr. Smith is the only one that can see my backyard. That one right there has building material in it. But you see that spot right there? I moved that one. But see, all that floods when that stopped up. So now, I've got another issue that y'all probably didn't get a picture of. I'd be glad to show it to you. But I've just about.
Why are you, why are you looking at that? Why are you looking at that? Let me ask you, the ditch you're talking about, is this ditch right here?
No, sir.
Okay.
On the other side.
It's one that's on the road?
No, it, it's on the north side of my property.
I'm saying it goes through your property and comes off the road.
All right, see that tree? It's right there at that tree. Matter of fact, it killed that tree.
What I'm trying to find out is this.
It's where the big ground covered. Go back.
All I'm trying to find out is this.
Okay, go back to the trees. The big cupboard that the rain comes from?
The one that this one drains into that runs this way.
Where the tree line is.
Yes.
Okay, this is the, this is the road right here.
That's a public road.
That's a public road right here. That's a pub, that's, that's East Petros.
West Petros.
I meant West Petros, yeah. Okay.
That's what I called you about and sent you two emails.
And, and, and we've come out and worked on some of it.
Well, yeah, but that wasn't the issue. I needed to talk to you about that drainage because it floods back my property.
Well, you need to talk to Jay about that.
Well, I did.
We've talked to Jay about it when he was running for.
No, we, well.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you know.
Well, we get it.
Back when he was asking for votes.
That's the only time we talked about it. But.
Now, what I'm getting at, what I'm getting at, we've done a work order on that and I don't know what we've done after you talk. That's what I'm trying to pinpoint what are you talking about. Now, I don't know how far we can go with that and there you go, road manager's sitting there listening and that's good. So if, if, uh, I don't know how far we can go, what more we can do, but that's, you know, we've done a work order to look at it, so.
Well, they call that road, which actually was the Hall Road, Key Charles Cove. All right, there's five residences back there. We need either two cupboards or a little slight bridge because there's a lot of water that comes down that ridge.
But that's on private property.
It is. It's off route.
If that's off route, okay.
So why don't we get back what we're here for?
Well, we're here for both. We're gonna be for both of them, Jay. We're gonna be here for both of them. I want, I wanna try to address the same problem because he's talking about where that's created some problem. He can't get something out or whatever, so. While it's here, we can, we can look at both of them. I think, oh, in that courtesy anyway, but go ahead on the nuisance part.
Mike and I can get together about the, the issue of all right away and what, if any, impact.
That's right.
Or more addressing that we could do.
Okay.
Not, likely not, not much if it's all right away, obviously.
Right.
Where would I go after here to file harassment charges?
Right by the head.
Right man, right there in the chair. Uh huh.
Okay.
I was working out of town at the time and lightning stroking, okay? Liam started following out of there and hit, I had a little lean through, I had my tractor on it. That's why you see my tractor out there by the road. And, because I had to get it out of the water too. But that tree right there, I've got to try to get it down. Well, just COVID stuff going on. We've been out of work for a while and, you know, it, I haven't been able to get back there and do it. Because it costs money. My wife is disabled. My son got traumatic brain injury. I'm trying to take care of grandkids and I'm working. I'm gonna call twenty-four hours a day. And, you know, they're just, that's what I do for a living now.
What is that? Oh, yeah, mm, who's that with?
Ward. But.
I know all about that taking, I gotta take care of, I got a ninety year old mother.
I'm having an issue with Mr. Paul Smith over a personal vendetta and every time he gets PO'd at me about something, he calls y'all. And, you know.
He does.
I'm fixing to, he was laughing at me this morning when I walked out to get in my truck. And matter of fact, let me show you a little something here. This is this morning.
Did you record him?
I got it.
But you can't hear him laughing.
Well, he's giggling about and laughing.
He sits out on his back.
I built his house inside of a metal building.
Oh, mercy.
Talk to me. Maybe he got a problem.
That was a while back.
He didn't act like this before.
Now, he's fixing to go to deer camp, okay? That is my horse trailer behind it. He can't look down there and I spy everything that's going on in my yard.
I got it. Well, look, hop back up here, buddy.
All right, go, go ahead. Let's, let's see what else we got.
Walk through the nuisance process and we'll get going through that system. So tell me where we need to go from here.
Well, flip out the pictures. What, what have we done, what have we done up to this point from before and now?
The other camper's gone.
That's not.
Okay, what about this camper?
That's not my property.
That don't belong to me.
That's January twenty-eighth, anyhow.
It is. I was just showing the old pictures. He said what had been accomplished.
That's not our property.
That's not my property.
Oh.
No, sorry.
That's my property.
Okay, then what's been, what's been moved?
Oh, and this is gone.
That trail, blue trailer's gone.
This is gone.
Yeah, it was gone, okay.
All this has been cleaned and I got a permit for my new pole barn too. You see it's set up on the pad.
These are new pictures now. Um, these begin the new pictures.
Nine two, no, the contact camper's been gone a week.
These were taken nine two.
This is yours or not yours?
Yeah, that's mine.
I haven't got to the camper yet, though. The camper is, is gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, one camp.
That buried spot?
Yeah, that's where it was.
And that car, I've had that car thirty-five years. It ain't going nowhere. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it out and put it up in the pole barn. But see, it's got to dry up enough so I can get back there and do what I gotta do. You see, as soon as it dried up enough, that other camper, which the water ruined.
The one right there.
Is gone.
Okay, what's this one gonna do?
That one is, has my, uh, my building materials from my pole barn in it. As soon as I get my pole barn built, it's gone.
Okay, how long you think you'll be before you do it?
Well, if I can stay out of here and go, go to work, probably not too long.
All right.
But my horse trailer and the warning up there by my horse, that's my horse trailer right down the left. It's, it's going to deer camp and my, uh, my new trailer that's in front of it's going to camp.
So that'll be going pretty soon.
What about all that stuff right there?
Well, I'm storing, uh, my tractor back there in the pole barn. When I get it there, that's my TV trailer in between. It's going to deer camp. That boat, I'm moving it down for a friend of mine when he gets in offshore. That's not my.
To where, okay.
Now, the boat behind it is mine.
Well, you know, you had plenty of time to address all this, you know, and, and now you come in here and giving all these reasons why it's not here. You're gonna do this, gonna do that. You've had ample time to address this stuff.
When, when are you gonna, uh, uh, so when are you gonna be moving them? I'll go deer camp, deer season's coming up, so deer camp's probably.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I mean, so you're coming up real soon to be moving this. So when, when do you think you're gonna be moving them?
Hope they take it to twenty-sixth this month.
The camper.
Between now, okay.
I make most standing up to Justice Court, declare the nuisance.
No, I don't think I want to do, I don't want to send it up yet. I can't, we, well, we, I will, I tell you what we can do. We can send it up, but we don't, we can, that, that will work in that we can still delay it. What I'm saying.
Just give me a couple of weeks.
No, what I'm, what I'm getting at, th- then it will. They give you more than that. What I'm getting at, you, the reason we do that, that way, if down the road you don't do anything, we don't have to start this thing all over again. So, but we can send it, declare it nuisance, send it to Justice Court, but that doesn't mean it's going to Justice Court today. We can, we can stretch this out. So it will give you plenty of time to get it done.
You want to monitor it for like thirty days, something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it'll give you plenty of time to do it, uh, thirty days plus, really. I mean, that, that, that'd be more than the two weeks you're saying. So would that work out?
I do my best.
No, I'm saying, you said a couple of weeks and we're giving you way more than that.
I say, I'm still working on it now every chance I get.
Yeah.
I've been working out of town. My dad passed away.
Yeah.
And I've been dealing with that.
I know.
And it's, it's tough.
I, I, I'm, you're singing to the choir here. I know exactly. I'm the same situation and some things you're saying.
I'm supposed to be retired, but no, I gotta go back to work again, you know?
But what I'm getting at, what I'm saying, if we do declare it, it's not, we've done that part and we do this all the time. It's not just you. We do it all the time.
I understand.
No reason to say that. It gives you still that plenty of time to get it done.
Here's my issue. I can fill this room up with people on my road to explain to you why I'm here. It's not because of my yard. It's a personal vendetta.
Well, I mean.
No, you're here because you have a lot of stuff out in your yard that needs to be picked up because our employee went down there and saw it.
Because he called her.
Letter to get it taken care of.
Now, y'all know what the deal is, all right?
Well, I can't, you know, I, I, I can't add to any of that. I don't know. I just know that you're here.
I'm telling you the truth.
And I, I'm not denying it, saying you're not. I'm just saying, what I know is why you're here right here.
Exactly.
And we're gonna, we can do this, go into clarifying nuisance, like Jay said, and, um, but it's still gonna give you plenty of time. We can make sure you have plenty of time. All that's doing is keeping us from start this whole process over again and, and, uh, we do it on ninety-five percent of the ones that come in here. Just that.
All right, what about the ditch runs down the north side of my property?
Well, that's where, that's where gonna, we're gonna look at that. If some of it's on private property, we may not can do anything to it. But as far as today, we can't address it. We'll have to get the road. But as far as today, we can't address it. We'll have to get the road manager and all of, we're gonna look at it.
Go back to the front, go wrap it back up, back up. All right, see the car? Right, that's my Camaro.
Mm-hmm.
There's a burn tag on it, but you see where I had to haul that dirt in?
Yeah.
Because Mr. Smith got a dead tree out by the road that stopped up all our culverts. I guess he didn't tell y'all about.
Culverts on the, on the road, on the road?
On the road.
On the road?
Yes.
Well, we should be doing some work orders to clean that, that up. It's stopped up.
I went out there and cleaned it up myself.
Well, I'm just saying, well, I appreciate that. We do.
Matter of fact, that little issue at the end of our road, I solved that issue too, because I moved Tommy Wells driveway back up in the curb. You don't have that stop up anymore. That's solved. Because Miss Gloria needed some help. Tommy's wife, getting stuck trying to get out and go to work. So I resolved that issue for y'all. But thirty days.
Well, it's gonna give you, you, you'll have at least that, at least that. And, and, uh, as far as that, we'll, we'll do a work order, Mike, to look at what there, see what we can do, whatever. Yeah, I'll have the attorney in case there's something, in some places we can't get off right away. But anyway, we're gonna, we'll address that. See what we can.
How many residents does it take within a quarter of a mile of the county road?
Yeah, I get to that point then.
To declare a county road?
Yeah.
There's a whole lot more to that, just clearing a county road. You got, it, it, that's a whole lot more. It has to be brought to standard. It's, it's a totally different thing.
I ain't trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to understand why, you know, that dusty gravel road and all them potholes and.
Down that private, that private road?
That's, that, uh, Pichols Cove.
I know. Uh, it's, it's a whole lot more to it than just declaring a county road. I, I mean, it's more than we're gonna get in all into today.
I understand.
I got you.
All right. Are we done?
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Mr. President, we will make sure that that public hearing is closed. Jared's motion is to go ahead and declare it a nuisance. Uh, to allow the staff to monitor the situation before it's actually turned over to Justice Court, uh, and then, uh, I believe that'd be the motion.
How many days you give them?
Huh?
How many days you give them?
Well, if we're working on it, we say them thirty days, but if we're working on it, you know, there again.
He ain't gonna do nothing.
Huh?
He ain't gonna do nothing.
Well, then maybe not, so.
You have plenty of time to do it before now.
Well, he's gonna haul them off to, at least we can do far.
He's always just like this, dude. And what he didn't tell you the rest of it, when he moved in that trailer, George Bobo's here, and we allowed him to redirect that ditch. He filled it in, knowing eventually it was gonna come back and wash out. That's exactly what it is, you know, it's trying to wash back out on his property.
He sort of added that part in.
What good was that gonna do?
Seemed like you knew more about it than I did.
I know all about this man, so, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That's why we shouldn't seem to bother with Justice.
Sound like he voted, he voted for you, didn't he?
How come you waited till, waited till, uh, uh, I got that district cleaned up? Kind of like that Wells house.
I didn't have nothing to do with this shit.
I'm, I'm just asking. I mean, I got stuck with your stuff. I got stuck with it. How many years? It's been eight years. I get stuck with it.
I thought Mr., I thought Mr. Stafford was frustrated.
How many days you give them? Thirty?
Yeah.
Aye.
Second.
Motion, Dave, send, declare it nuisance, give them thirty days, second by Steve, you know, discussion.
Nervous.
All opposed, say aye. All opposed?
Okay. Item B, Mr. President, is the Anna Lou Pickett nuisance property at three thirty Cole Road, District Three.
Here we go, Calhoun. You're up to bat.
All right.
We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. Renee demonstrate the photos.
Yeah, before we get started, I ain't got nothing to do with this one either.
We've had complaints on this property in the past. Um, a new complaint was received ju-, uh, July, um, sixteenth. Uh, about, uh, campers being used as dwellings, inoperable vehicles, tall grass, and, uh, an issue with the sewage. These pictures were taken July sixth. And then these are the new pictures. Um, our mail was received.
We dealt with this over a year ago, didn't we?
We did.
How long, how long has this been, something going on with this? How far back? Two thousand seventeen. Oh, wow.
I think it's multiple families living there.
Why, those are new pictures?
Camper, little ship behind it.
Oh, yeah. This there?
Mm-hmm. That's the next one.
Oh, so he just came.
Y'all want, yeah, both of them or one of them?
Just, if you don't mind, I'll tell you what, Ms. Puckett, why don't you just stay right where you are? Yeah, okay. We're gonna let her stay right where she is, and, uh, the board may have questions about your property. Are you able to see the screen where your property is? Uh, being depicted here? You can stay.
Or just move chairs.
How many folks are living at this property?
Yeah.
Uh, as, as of date, um, Miss Anna is the homeowner, and I live there with her and, uh, her son, uh, in the trailer. And the little house back there was her, um, grandson and a girlfriend.
In that house right there?
In the little wooden house.
In that thing?
No.
It's just, it's just behind that trailer.
Nobody's living in that little thing, right?
No.
There was two other campers she said removed because they were just used, been used for storage. Her grandson's been there for many years, over ten years. He's a hoarder. His grand, uh, his, uh, girlfriend's a hoarder. Uh, they drag up stuff. She told him about the letter, and he said that it was a fake. Uh, he didn't believe her. He's very disrespectful. She asked him to move. He's now moving to Smith County. Uh, the sooner the better. She's seventy-eight years old, and she's out there the last thirty days with a trailer loading things, and he's unloading just as soon as he, she was loading. Uh, we've had, we worked with Brett McCaptain, and, or we worked with us, rather, and one of the girlfriends were moved. It was, uh.
The one that was selling drugs or buying drugs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Had them, had her removed, and, uh, she had, I mean, just multiple things all over the place.
Well, who's living in the lo-, in the camper there?
No, nobody. That, that's where, uh, that's mine, and that's where I go just to, uh, you know, relax or whatever. We keep it operational, so the varmints and stuff, but no, I stay in the house with her. She lives in the living room. She, I got her a day bed, and I have her bedroom. But we do keep it operational in case that we wanna go somewhere.
How y'all got power to that building?
How?
Yeah.
It's connected to the power plant. Sometimes, sometimes cats come to, to grow in boys and stays all night out there. Yeah. Over the weekend.
Well, how, where's, where's the sewer going to?
Uh, well, it was, it was into the, uh, other sewage. I didn't, I didn't have no clue about that. Uh, now I know that that's not possible. Um, Miss Anna didn't know anything about, uh, how to operate the internet. Uh, she didn't, I just, uh, saw the letters the other day, and, um, tried to contact the health department, uh, about that. Uh, they said I have talked to Miss Ann. Miss Ann was already gone for the day. Each time that I tried calling her, uh, I didn't know anything about how to, uh, go online, do a plan of action to get permanent, to do, to fix the problem. Field line fell in, and they were, uh, gonna try to repair that, but we've just got to get with, uh, Miss Ann to know what to do.
Well, the health department's contacted us, Rankin County, and said that it's not up to compliance, and, uh, I mean, sewer's running out to the ditch, to the creek.
Right. Miss Anna's been there for twenty-five years.
I, I know how long she's been there.
And, uh, when her husband passed away, she, you know, she's done the best she can.
I know.
And with the grandson that was supposed to help her with the property.
The problem is, is there's three different families living there. And, and I mean, that property's set up for one trailer.
Right.
And if somebody needs to stay with her, that trailer's adequate enough for somebody to live inside that trailer instead of living in the camper in the little house behind it.
No, I know. That's why we've asked, uh, or she has, rather, not us. But she's asked her grandson and girlfriend to move.
Well, the, the little camper's got to go too.
I mean, you can't have a recreational vehicle on your property?
Yep, it's can't live in it.
Well, no one's living in it, though.
That's debatable. Well, I think she just says she's got people coming on the weekend, so that's people living in it.
Well, I mean, they just stay out there, and they can watch it in.
That's, that's living.
Okay, well, we can, we can stop that. I mean, I, I don't wanna lose my camper, just, you know, for being there with her.
I think the problem is, it's been going on for many years, and there's, like Brad said, there's multiple families living out here, and this lady doesn't need to be taken advantage of like this.
Oh, I understand, sure.
So we're having to step in and, uh, fix it. So y'all are about to go to Justice Court and let the judge.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I make the most sense in Justice Court.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Steve, you know, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. Y'all can deal with.
You can work it out with the judge.
Okay, gentlemen, we will.
I want to know who's doing all this.
They do too.
That's a public highway. No, we are. I, I were.
I don't think it's Calhoun.
Man, this started three years ago.
I think that fellow over there is going to be taking them pictures.
Miss Ann. Brad's right here. Explain to her, hey.
Explain to her how.
Tell, tell her Brad's standing right here. This is, this is Brad.
No, she's looking for the person taking the pictures.
I ain't seen him in so long, I couldn't say.
That's, he's a good-looking guy on the.
I'm right here. I'm right here.
I want y'all to keep your mouth shut about my place. That place belongs to me.
I understand that.
My husband was born on that place. I'm not getting it out that nobody gonna do it. I picture it.
Nobody's telling you to get rid of it.
Ma'am, this boy is trying to help you.
Why y'all won't do this to me? I hate y'all nothing but nobody.
We trying to help you, ma'am.
We trying to help you out. They, everybody that lives over there is taking advantage of you.
Well, why don't you go around Rankin County and look at some of the other places that's like that?
Ma'am, we do. We do. And we're, we got, uh, people, when they call in a complaint, there's multiple complaints on this. They have called it in. We got to go out, and they take pictures of it from the road.
Well, for that, it'd be a problem of what you call offense where nobody can see it.
Well, we, we, y'all were in here before Brad was ever elected, weren't you? Wasn't like a year and a half ago?
This is going on way before I was here.
No, I, I remember being in, her being in here a year or two.
I called Christine and talked to her and, and told her this.
Let us just help. That will help. That's all we're trying to do.
And not everyone that's there is taking advantage of her. I live there.
Right.
And I love this woman like I love my mother. I take care of her more than all the children.
But you got to, nothing's up to.
I don't take advantage of her.
All right, but what he's saying is, we need to get the property cleaned up and used for what it's, uh, set to be used for.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, that's not.
I just want you to just stop being, being your neighbor. I don't take advantage of Miss Anna. I beautify her yard. I do yard work.
I understand that, but, you know, you know how many times the sheriff's department's been called?
Yes, sir, I do, but never on me.
Why have they been called out there?
Her grandson.
What is going on?
Just.
Loud music?
No, drugs.
Drugs? Oh, my God.
Well, that's why she, that's why she asked.
Brad, Brad, listen to me. Brad's trying to help you.
Ma'am.
Brad is trying to help you.
Did you know he was doing drugs, your grandson? No, I know, but did you know he's trading drugs off your place?
Do you know your grandson sells drugs off your place? But that's what's going on, man.
Oh, my.
Miss Anna, you're talking about when you call, you, you, you do, you are aware that, when Nicole was there, that you called Brett to have her removed. Because of her selling drugs on your property. You did not agree with that. That, yeah.
But that, but that's more, I mean.
They're, they're trying to help you.
So they're trying to clean, help clean it up, or they won't be dealing with that kind of thing. You certainly don't wanna lose all of this because of drugs. Yeah, drugs will wind up making you lose it all. We're trying to help you keep it.
Well, I drink my beer and bring it.
I'm with you. Well, I'm, most time, I'm in the barn.
I've known you all my life, and I, I loved you and Bobby Jack. I used to help y'all.
Four.
And I don't bother nobody. I don't go no more.
Right. I respect. We know you don't. You don't.
And that's what Brad, Brad's trying to help you. So that's, let him, let him take the process and the steps to get you some help, okay? That's what he's doing.
I understand that. That's right. She, she doesn't understand the process.
Okay, just, right.
We, we walk the same.
Well, if you, if you understand that you need to help, but we're trying to help in the long run, otherwise, you know the drugs will wind up, you wind up losing everything there.
That's right.
Everything she's got.
That's right. That's why she asked me to vote.
Nobody's trying to take her place.
Right.
But it's got to be done right, though.
Well, he's, he's in the process of moving to Smith County. He's supposed to be getting his lights on and moving.
But let him sit here, let him know where he's going.
Good.
To the point that she's out there loading the trash for him.
All right. Let's move on. We, we, uh, we voted, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can contact the Justice Courts that.
Right, now you got time to get it done before then, just the way you.
If you, if all of this is taken care of. But the judge will, he'll have the authority to make him leave.
That's excellent. That's what it takes, because, uh, you know, a seventy-eight-year-old woman sometimes is powerless of her, uh, greatness of grandson.
Brad, he's, he's giving you the ability to fix it that way. That's what he's doing. Not only that, it'd be nice to get your sewer stuff taken care of before you get up there. And the sewer's nothing to do with Rankin County. That's with the health department, so.
That's not us.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to get in compliance.
I didn't know what you're saying, but I just read the letter and tried to contact Miss Ann, and she's supposed to be giving me a call back. So I better understand what we need to do, to get the purpose and do the things we need to do.
All right, good luck.
All right. So that public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to item C under the nuisance considerations, which is, uh, Dalton McAfee.
Oh, Lord.
Dalton McAfee nuisance property, two, four, eight, nine Star Road, District Three. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee demonstrate the photos.
All right, so, um, we, we received a complaint on this property in June of two thousand twenty. Uh, this is a convenience store. Uh, on Star Road. These pictures were taken July twenty-second. Uh, somebody was living in a camper here. There was a sewer issue, rubbish and debris, and inoperable vehicles. So the, these are the new pictures, uh, that have taken care of the issues, it appears. Um, looks a lot better.
Mr. Dalton, I talked, he gave me a call yesterday, and, uh, what they're waiting on now, the cones, DQ, there had to be a cleanup there, and they got about ninety-five percent of it. DQ's come in and doing a cleanup, and they're gonna put gas pumps. The commu-, community needs this service station, but we don't need it looking like.
It was.
Like it was, and he's aware of that, and he's, I don't know if this gentleman behind you is the one that's leasing the property or what.
Are you here on this matter, Dalton McAfee? Okay, go come forward and state your name and address for record.
Yes, my name is Daniel Sethi, and address is twenty-four eighty-nine Star Road.
Could you spell your last name?
Sethi, S-E-T-H-I.
Are, are y'all living in the store?
No, sir.
You, the store is actually a store?
Right.
Okay.
I did have a lady, she was working there. She was staying in the camper, but she's no longer there no more.
Okay. So you understand that, that we can't have that anymore?
Yes, sir.
All right. We just need to keep the property nice and neat, and, uh, make it where people want them by there anyway.
Yeah.
The community needs the store there.
Yeah.
And, and I know it's a little bit more work to be done on the pumps, and I've talked, Mr. Dalton, and he's aware of that, and, uh, but it's done a lot of improvements there since the thirty days ago or whenever. And, uh, but please stay on top of it.
Yes, sir.
Brad's just wanting you to monitor.
Yeah, let's do, we're gonna monitor it for the next thirty days, and as long as it continues like that, we're not gonna have a problem.
Brad's motion would be table for thirty days. We'll come back with the next planning commission meeting, and Renee can get an update at that point. Mr. Seti is welcome to come if he feels need, he feels that he needs to, but Ms. Renee will give an update at the next planning commission on this piece of property. That would be Brad's motion is to table.
Alright, have a motion table by that. Brad, second by Jared, all in favor say aye. Aye, sir. Thank you, Mr. Seti. You're done. Alright, is that it?
That's all.
Okay, have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Question by Jared, second by Daniel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. Next one, our agenda is Craig, number two C.
Uh, we have, um, a follow-up on a discussion that was begun, I believe about a month ago, may have been, at an intervening meeting, I've lost track of days. Uh, this is a follow-up discussion on a request that came from the state health department for the county's participation in the Rankin County Health Department renovation project. You might recall, uh, Mr. Caulfield, I'm forward please, Mr. David Caulfield appeared before you previously. Mr. Caulfield, uh, reported to you that there was funding available to assist, uh, the, the state health, through the state health department, uh, to assist with the renovation of an area because they're having to actually relocate part of their WIC program. They're no longer going to operate that out of the current facility. And so, they're needing to take some of the employees whose function is with the WIC program and get them into another facility. They want to use the facility in Pearl. And so, there's a little bit of renovation that's going to be required. Mr. Caulfield, I don't, you'll have to forgive me, I don't remember the specific amount of money that is involved here. Uh, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. My recollection is between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand, if I remember correctly. So, uh, what we, what we discussed at that point is that the, um, what exactly would be the participation of the county? Well, the county owns the building and so, uh, we're, we're sort of in that position of landlord, uh, and we need to, uh, provide authority for them to make the renovations that are required. Uh, they are receiving funding to make the renovations. I, I asked you guys to table consideration of it until today, although there is a looming deadline and we would like to go ahead and act on this. I was concerned that we were going to be asked to participate without any remuneration to the county for our costs. Mr. Caulfield, to his credit, uh, understood that s- situation. As I reviewed the documentation, it became clear to me that there isn't. There was not money in the presentation, in the proposal to accommodate the county's likely cost. Uh, they revisited that, I'm thankful. Folks, I think in Atlanta, uh, said, you know what, that's, that's a reasonable request. Uh, and so, they've asked us to put together a, an itemization of the costs that we believe the county will incur to participate in this. The project requires the county, in essence, to, to oversee, to superintend, to use our budgeting process, uh, to use our proposal acquisition process to secure the contractors that are going to be required to do the actual renovation work. And so, there's going to be a cost to us that's administrative in nature and some document preparation. There may be some engineering costs that are involved. And so, we need to itemize those costs and get those to Atlanta. I think there's time, uh, to do this and for you guys to act on it, Mr. Caulfield, don't let me get sideways here. But I think at least by, if not the eighth, then at least by the fifteenth, we will, September the fifteenth, we will have the information that's needed to, to give Mr. Caulfield and the folks in Atlanta the, the number that we think needs to be included to cover the county's costs. And you can act on it at that point on the fifteenth, if that works on our timeline. I think we'll have enough time to get our costs together, get those to Atlanta, get them approved and then get back in front of you with the actual approval. So, today's, for today's purpose, I, I just need to know, do you have any concerns about the project itself? In light of the fact that I think we're going to solve what was my concern, which was making sure the county's costs were covered. Does anybody have any concerns about that?
Nope.
Alright, so what I would like to, what I'd like to do is to work with Mr. Caulfield. I'm going to, we're going to get the, the documentation, the costs to him. And if we're all satisfied and the only thing that needs to be done on the fifteenth is you just to approve the project and the participation of the county in the project.
Aye.
There may be some documented execution that has to take place. I don't see a reason for Mr. Caulfield to have to come back on the fifteenth, unless y'all do. Okay?
Oh, you're good.
I'm fine.
Thank you very much. We'll, uh, we'll get, we'll get the details worked out.
Thank you.
It'll be on fifteenth agenda. Alright, Laura?
Thank you, Craig.
First item I have is authority to transfer forty-three thousand. That would be from general fund to fund one oh seven, which is our two percent unemployment fund to allow for proper funding. We have to keep a certain dollar amount. We don't go through the state unemployment that they have a percentage they set and they hold it out. We hold ours own instead of using their bond and pay somebody when they file unemployment that comes back from the county.
Motion, motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir.
The next item I have is award of our HVAC contract. We did receive on the twenty-seventh, we did receive, um, I think it was five proposals. And, um, we have gone through them and would like to award it back to Environment Masters. And this would be a year contract.
They had it before, didn't they?
Pardon?
Did they have it?
Yes, they had it before and we received, um.
Who's it going to?
To Environment Masters. We did receive, um, information from Trane, Terry Services, Inc., Upchurch, Environment Masters and Star.
Okay.
And we'd like to recommend Environment Masters.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Jared to go with the recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir.
The only other thing would be, um, review of the agendas for the eighth, if y'all have any questions.
Let's move on down to this next item.
He's on his way, uh, David.
Well, I got something additional, then if I, if I can do something real quick. Uh, and it's dealing with, uh, Indian Mound Ridge.
Well, hang on before you get there. Let's do this one other item here, uh, the limestone, that's county.
It's really in the nature of an update. Uh, after the board, uh, indicated its willingness to move forward with, um, dealing with the, the theft of its product from the county, the White Road County Barn. Uh, there has been a, an investigation into the matter that has been ongoing, communications back and forth. We've, obviously, we've talked to district attorney's office, uh, as a, a part of that investigation and getting that investigation conducted. I'm trying to be careful here not to, it is an ongoing criminal investigation, so I want to be careful not to reveal too much, but I want, I want you guys to understand that that, the work product of that is being developed. And there's some additional limited work that needs to be done, some, some pricing, some, uh, to, to get, to get a dollar figure of the theft, so we know exactly what we're dealing with here. And so, in anticipation of that, uh, we're being told that more than likely, somebody on behalf of the county is going to need to execute an affidavit, a charging affidavit that sets out the charges on behalf of the county and that initiates the actual proceeding. And so, what we need today is just some sort of authorization for, for whomever the board believes is the appropriate person to actually execute the affidavit. And that, that could be any number of people, uh, the road manager, uh, the, the actual road department employee who witnessed, um, the, the activity. Um, so, it did, really, me as more counsel, I, I, we just need you guys to authorize somebody specifically to be bored with that.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Alright, I make the motion to appoint Craig's life.
Second.
Motion by myself.
Why did I keep talking? You made me nervous, Jay, like you won't do anything until I said everything. I could have stopped.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Craig. Alright, Brad?
Alright.
That would be to add it because we had, this is just.
Alright. Alright. Make a motion that what was added, be, uh, Craig's life be, I represent.
Motion for Greg's by Steve, second by, second by myself.
You wanted, yeah, you said.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. Alright. Aye, Brad.
Alright, this is before I come a part of this board and I'm just bringing this up. This was a nego- this was.
You done ordered enough today.
This was negotiated before I got here and, um, I know the board agreed to take over Indian Mound Ridge from Pete Alman and that, the Willen and Dillons on that deal.
Yeah, somehow nobody ever wants to take responsibility for it, but yeah, we did. So, what's your point?
The point is, is we got a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, on that little trade we did. And that's not enough money to get that road done.
Yeah, that's what me and Gaines came and talked about one time. When did we, when did we talk about that? Couple months ago?
Well, it was before he, it was.
It was before you, I guess.
Six, yeah, it was six months.
It was. Yeah.
It wasn't before him.
Yeah.
It was, it was for Brad, it was, it was Bob.
Bob, yeah.
The, the actual cash amount was one fifty, their worth, there was a difference.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Now, I thought, I thought we asked for some money to do some roads up and under. So, what about it?
Well, we need some additional funds to get this road complete.
I agree with you. We can put this all in one motion. We can cook, we put this all wrapped into Gaines' and my motion.
That has nothing to do with what y'all want and.
What you're talking about, what, what, what kind of dollars are they?
It's, it's going to take a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight more dollars.
I thought we already voted on this.
I know it's been voted on, but the funds ain't there to do it.
I thought we already voted to do it. We accepted the road.
Y'all voted to accept the road and they paid.
I thought it was the cap. Wasn't it capped or something when we voted on it?
I don't.
I mean, was the vote, I mean, when we voted on, was it capped? Or did we put a certain amount of money to it?
The board voted to accept for public maintenance.
So, it's up a hundred and thirty-nine.
There was only an estimate at that time of what we thought it would cost to actually. I suspect, uh, I suspect there's some drainage.
All of that's been done. All the road is prepared to go with asphalt.
The prep and, the prep and, and the drainage byproduct is probably running out of jobs on, that'd be my guess. I bet we were, we were baking, making the best guess that we could make on what it would cost to get it in final prep form.
Alright, so, we, uh, didn't we, like, say the road's only going to be a certain width?
Yes, so it's.
It's not going to be long.
Yes, so, I mean, you, you have the discretion to accept for public maintenance, any road you want to accept.
Really?
That road.
I'm going to bring a list next time.
Let me rephrase.
You gotta get some people to vote for it too.
When I say you, I mean the old.
We're struggling on that part. You know, we're struggling on that part.
So, three of you.
Yeah.
Can, uh, have this ready to accept a public.
I've got, I've got roads that are already public and been public for thirty or forty years and I can't get any asphalt though.
Well, the roadways, like I said, all this was before me, now, all the roadways has been acquired and everything, so.
Just remember where I'm at now. I remember you. I, I didn't take this road that I'm talking about and neither did my predecessor or his predecessor. It was county road before we were ever born. Probably. Well, I don't know. Go ahead.
How many people live on it?
Probably twenty.
Well, we talking about my road or your road?
Both.
I brought my road up. Alright.
Where, where does the money come from? Out of the road?
Out of the road, I guess. Or it's going to come out of cash, but it's whatever. If you don't want. I.
It's not in the road, bud?
Um, and I can. Uh, I've been picking, Brian, uh, Brad, uh, Brad. We got snookered a little bit, I think, and, uh.
A little?
Yeah.
We got snookered, period.
But the people that live out there have gotten snookered a lot worse.
That's right.
They went from, they had, if I remember like they had utilities in the road, they had to move and we would give them one thing and another and they would never get all of it, the deed and I think they had to get a lot of the land squared up with the legal and that kind of stuff. And the people out there have done what.
Everything they supposed to do.
Right. They have done everything they supposed to. And they are living out there. They do pay taxes and we agreed to take the road. We thought we'd agreed to take the road with enough money to put down some blacktop.
Yes, right.
It appears now that it's not enough. Uh, I'm going to dig deep in my, it hurts me so bad because I was cut down when I asked for.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about a million and a hundred and one thirty-nine.
It don't take but ten of them one thirty-nine to make a million.
Yeah, I know.
But part of, part of the thing that got us in the situation you got over there was Jay and his crew went out there and looked at, uh.
Jay?
Didn't you go out there to Alman's place and designed, didn't y'all redesign it? I thought y'all met with Alman down there.
Negative.
What's the name of that building?
What?
On twenty-five, the tax room.
Tax, tax.
Who met down there?
I did.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you didn't get.
No, no, that was already, that was already done.
No, but part of that.
But that was a package deal.
When that came up was, what got us into the bad deal with this was, y'all went down and negotiated the deal on the construction of the room, right? The tax room. And then it got upside down and somebody approved money.
No, 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 you want to go there.
What happened?
You go there, we're right, we went and looked at it and we agreed on twenty thousand.
So, he came in.
Now, somebody else is not here.
Alright.
Did all this change and he got dumped on us.
I'm talking about the building.
But it, it cost us about twenty thousand more dollars.
Came into it. So, we offset a deal with the road to offset the payment for the, uh.
I can tell you what it was. But he was over here and said he was going to reconstruct the building and he wasn't going to charge any rent until he got finished.
That's right.
Then his wife come up in there saying, or Judy came back up here and said, oh, no, we gotta get paid and then Craig brought, oh, we signed the lease, so we really owe it.
And they approved it. But all that was when they came in on the Indian Mounds subdivision road.
That's right. So, we went over there and what the deal was, alright, we'll start paying the lease if you go ahead and write that check out today that you owe us.
That's right.
So, there wasn't no deal as far as Indian Mound.
I guess.
That deal already been paid.
Yeah. Judy cut the deal with the.
Right.
Whatever. But then they got it backdoored into some kind of road deal.
A package deal.
It's confusing.
Judy cut a big deal.
My, my heart's with you too.
Well, I mean, some of y'all want to vote maybe, that's fine, but I mean, I, I got.
You gotta make a motion.
Hey.
I make a motion to approve it.
We're with you. It was, that's just, but that was all the circumstances that came up that kind of clouded it.
I make a motion to approve the money to do.
I thought we already did.
I did too, Jay.
He wants an extra hundred and forty thousand.
Extra money.
That's coming out of general cash, because Mike, your budget's done, right?
For this year.
Yes.
This is a, uh, will be a, an extra narrow road.
Could we take it out of next year's budget? We got nine miles of overlay in there.
That's what y'all wanted to do.
No, I'm just kidding, I was just asking. I think we got nine miles of overlay. How much overlay we got in next year's budget? Nine miles? So, we just got, if we, there's five of us and you divide that by nine miles, how much is that? Does that cover Indian Mounds?
Why aren't we?
If that's anything, y'all are a little better about it. I should want to bring it to y'all, make, I want to buy on board.
I'm good with, I'm good with chip ceiling.
Why aren't we chip ceiling?
There's not enough base there, Steve.
I'm with you. Yeah, chip ceiling is great.
I'm fine with chip ceiling. It'll hold up.
Right.
But I don't want it to go out there every year.
You don't think chip ceiling will hold up?
But you probably will. Will it hold up?
Let's engineer, engineer, what do you think?
We don't really know a lot about what's under it is, is the concern. So, I'm, I can't think whether it's going to hold up.
So, we do and then don't, we're going to turn around and have to do it anyway, huh? I don't want to waste money.
They don't know, yep, yep. But I mean, for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand more, whatever, more.
It's a hundred and thirty-nine, three twenty-eight.
Hundred and forty, hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think we need to go ahead and put this at rest.
With the one fifteen.
Right.
Y'all, y'all understand that it's going to be with the one fifteen.
Right, right, right.
That, that's got a little fluff in it, might not quite be that much, you know.
Right.
That over there is maybe my ten clip, so, you have a little money to worry about.
Yeah, and it ain't going to be put down real thick either, huh?
Okay.
We ain't micro, we.
Okay, so, Jer- Jerry made a motion to add this item.
Second.
Uh, Steve second it. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I like making motion to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight.
I make the motion to, for a hundred and forty.
So, which one of y'all are making the motion?
I am since I added it.
Oh, okay, alright.
But I thought Brad made the motion, huh?
Yeah.
Woo.
Alright, I re-slimed mine, I make it for a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, Brad makes motion for a hundred and forty.
Second.
Second by Jared, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You didn't ask for comments.
Thought we don't have any.
Yeah.
Brad's good though, you know? He came in here and asked for a hundred and thirty-nine.
Oh, no.
And got one forty.
No, he came in here.
That's pretty solid right there.
He came here one day and ended up getting six million. What do you mean?
Hey, Jared asked for one seventy-five on a fire station, Bishop gave him two hundred thousand. The problem is.
You better back, you better go re-watch that.
I got it, you can play it. But the, well, we, I figured out our problems. We're asking, we're asking for, right, we're asking for the wrong number. What we did was, we made a motion at the number we asked for, what we should have done. Way over that, made that motion and then brought it through there, you know?
We talking about pennies.
Pennies.
Alright.
David, calm up, man.
Hey, while David's coming up, can I bring something up? Not, not for a vote, it's just discussion. I'm scared. Is it like, David, this'll take just a minute. There's a place on Sand Hill Road, when you get off of twenty-five.
Yes, you're saying it too.
Maybe between a quarter and a half a mile, there's a trailer park. You can't see the trailers hardly at all from the road. There's about ten, they're all owned by the landowner. They're all rental. You, you don't see them. There's a gravel drive that's fair. They have a wood fence that kinda blocks the view of one side of it. And in the past, they have put their garbage cans out at the road for, I know, nearly twenty years. And at those times, the dogs and coons and things, and they're getting to where they put their garbage out, even though they know, I say they know that, garbage picks it up twice a week, two days, but they'll have garbage out there a lot.
If you're lucky.
And I'm, yeah, right, right. Garbage don't pick up twice a week. Uh, it should. But some of the neighbors have complained and the landowner has taken the approach that it's the county's problem and that the county should allow them to put a dumpster out on the road. On Sand Hill Road.
At our cost?
No, they said they'll pay for it. Uh, in lieu, in lieu, but, I mean, my problem is that is a major road that people travel coming from, all the way from Peashaw, Leesburg, they cut through that road. It's a shortcut.
Why don't they pull down to that trailer park and get garbage down there?
I, exactly. I'm saying, if, it's a little gravel road that services about, I'm gonna say, ten trailers. Probably couldn't get to all of them with that, with a truck, with a garbage truck. If they want to do a dumpster, they can go not very far in there and the road wise, it's a big open area. I'm okay with them getting permission from us to do a dumpster, but where you cannot see it from the road.
From the road, I agree.
Because everybody that travel, they're gonna take their garbage and throw it at that dumpster on their way to work or shopping or whatever. The road is, that's a heavy traffic road. Everybody out there has had problems getting their garbage picked up. I mean, it's more routine. They don't get it picked up now than they do. So I know what they're gonna say. Well, if they're not gonna pick my garbage up, I'll just throw it at that dumpster. That dumpster's gonna be overflowing and out of the road. So, are y'all with me that?
Well, let me ask you this.
We can't make a variance and let them do a dumpster, can we?
Instead of they all paying a garbage fee?
The way that would work is if it be an agreement between property owner and waste management.
Okay.
That's how that.
Well, waste management told them to come to me.
Well, um, let, let me communicate the fact that waste management explained just reaching an agreement with the property owner.
I don't want it on the county road. I don't want it where you can even see it.
Be on our count either.
They pay for it.
Yeah, they pay for it, Jay. I got, I got one that did that and they pay for it.
No, I'm saying if they have their own dumpster, they don't need to be on our county count.
And those trailers. Right. Oh, yeah, yeah. You can X those off. The number of.
Yeah. Which we need to get on that quick too.
Well, they supposed to be working on it, but I think Lance has been.
Okay. Y'all with me?
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah.
I don't think I follow that last act prior to the dumpster thing, but if anybody wants to offer more than what I'm asking for, I'd be okay with that.
You saw it work.
You should've been in.
Yeah, I seen how it works. Somebody up there can sympathize with me.
I'm learning.
Should've been here for the, for the nuisance. You just seen how it really gets some amount of attention.
Well, I don't wanna be a part of the nuisance thing, but, uh, the last, the last time we, uh, last time we met, I think, uh, we were authorized to look into options. Or maybe something for the county to serve as a county morgue. And, uh, I was asked to come up with what I would need, or what I could get by with. Uh, last time we talked about a eight by eight or eight by ten cooler. Uh, I have gotten a quote on a ten by twelve, which is just a couple thousand dollars more. The eight by ten that I had initially looked at was ten thousand. I found a ten by twelve for ninety-two hundred and I can, I'm working on getting another quote too from another place. But, uh, putting the pencil to that and, and looking at a ten by twelve, that would serve us a lot better as far as capacity. Uh, if we got a couple of things to go in there that is used to store people. Um, the way I have it figured, we could store up to fifteen people in there. And I know that seems like a lot, uh, and it is, but since we last met, um, I had four in one day that had to go into a, uh, storage situation. Um, seven in a week that the county had to store. Looking at the cost basis on that right now, I sat down yesterday and done the math on that. Pretty close to approaching a four thousand dollar storage bill. Um, I'm about to.
All this you got laid out here, what is the cost? What would the cost be?
I don't know what it costs to build that.
This layout.
I don't know. I don't, I'm, I would trust y'all to look at previous contractors to.
Would this all be inside that storage building?
Absolutely. Thirty by sixty. I could put everything. You're talking about this that I have on this paper?
Oh, it's a thirty by sixty storage building?
Yes, sir.
Oh, but then the cooler would go inside of that?
The cooler and everything, if you looked at map, and I said Sallyport, there's just something for me to back the truck into in case, uh, you know, it's inclement weather and, uh, also, you know, a place to go in and be able to shut the door down and securely work from within without being seen, you know, by the public. The cooler will go inside that, that building. Inside that part of it. And the cooler that I asked for, it's because I understand we're gonna do a concrete floor. I cut the expense on the cooler by not asking them to add a floor to the cooler, 'cause if we have a concrete floor, then we don't need the additional flooring in the cooler.
Really?
Yeah, yep.
So we have both straight down to the concrete slab or something?
They won't have a floor. They won't have a floor at all though. I've, I've not seen those.
I mean, will they have to have a drain? Will the condensation go on the outside?
Definitely would need a drain.
Okay.
You know, so.
That's, that, that slab, if you.
Slope to the drain.
Prepared a certain weight to, because it's gonna be so cold?
No, I mean, it's, it's gonna maintain a temperature of around forty-two degrees.
Yeah, I, I mean, everyone I've ever been in had a floor. I've re-floored some of them. I, I didn't know that.
I mean, we could do that, but they offered the option of not having a floor.
I mean, I don't, I don't know about that part.
And if it's on concrete, you know, the, we can, we can. Because we use concrete floors prior to getting into the coolers now, so I don't see why we would have to have the extra expense of putting a floor.
Easier to get in too.
Right.
We wouldn't have any kinda little ramp.
Well, we would have a little lip, you know, that would be self-contained.
Right, well, there's.
Gotta have something to attach the sides to.
Right, that's true.
But that's nothing but just a little small ramp to, just to roll the stretcher or the tables up into. Um.
Where, where are we talking about men have put this?
Well, the only real option that I was shown to is out there on Marquette Road beside the old existing, I don't know what y'all call the buildings. It was the old maintenance shop. Mike, is that where you, used to be?
Wow, care. What's, what's that building?
What are you talking about? That there?
Where you showing me?
Shop? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's the emergency operations center, uh, warehouse or storage facility is what it is. Where we were gonna go a year and a half ago, we were gonna actually put two bays on and Mike had to move up from the, uh, from the other shop. When, when I was approached about this, that was, that was the only place I knew of off the top of my head to be able to, uh, to do something quickly.
Is any, I don't know, I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, is there another option? Is that the most logical?
That's the one we talked about going over there and look.
Alright, Jay had mentioned last time about in the basement of the old building, on the building where we're currently going to or headed to.
Or, or where you're currently at.
The Chancery Building.
Oh, the old courthouse.
Yeah. The, the, the two things that y'all need to bear in mind, um, when I first got moved into there beside the nine-one-one offices, um, those ladies were terrified of what I may bring into that office one day.
No, I mean, but their office would be gone. You're in there by yourself.
And I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I mean, y'all have already gone to great lengths to get the coroner's office moved to that new building. Now, you're talking about just using the old facility as a storage place?
Just let that be your whole office?
Yeah.
No, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, that's what we're just asking about.
Yeah.
I, I mean, you're talking about his old, where you are now.
But that's not the old Chancery.
No, no.
The basement over at the old Chancery.
I thought they were just, their intent was to move everybody out of that building completely.
Well, it was, but, you know, that would be, uh, versus us having to go build a twenty-seven hundred square foot building and add all this. We have the whole, I don't know what's currently, what the use is gonna be for going forward.
For what? For what?
The basement.
Now, the basement being in the Chancery Building or where I'm at now?
No, the Chancery.
No, right now he's talking about where he is.
I know, but I'm. The one that I always looked at is the Chancery Building.
Yeah, but we couldn't do that 'cause, you know, those election commissioners in there and bringing in dead bodies.
Well, that's what we was gonna walk over there.
I thought that's what we're gonna look at.
No, we, we still gonna look at it. I think we need to look at it just to see how they got it all laying out.
Well, there had to be a complete wall set, totally separate.
The guy, guys, the main, the main thing y'all gotta keep in mind, wherever I go.
It's got to be.
I need to be independent because some of my cases, uh, you know, people have been down two or three months and people wouldn't be able to stay in the building. I cannot take a decomposed body into a situation where other people are sharing offices. Uh, y'all'd have to have a new coroner 'cause I'd be killed.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that's what I was saying, the, it sounded like a good fit. Stay where he's at. Like, everybody's moving out of there. He'll have the whole place to himself.
If you stay where you're at, if you stay where you're at, would it be big enough to do everything you're talking about?
I think it would take, uh, an extensive amount of construction, uh, you know, remodeling, but yeah, we could make it work.
I mean, I, I'm just, I don't know if that's an option to look at.
Well, if we built that on Marquette, could your office be there?
Could if I wanna sit in there with all of that stuff, but, I mean, I, I'd do it, but, um.
I wouldn't want that either.
I, I'd probably lose my secretary over it, but, uh.
Nah, you.
Well, I mean, is this something that's gonna be, you gonna use from here on out forever?
Absolutely. I, I see if we're establishing a county morgue, it, it, absolutely, it'd be not only for me, but for the next coroner in line. And, and here's another thing too, I, I'm in the process right now of sending thirty-six hundred dollars of those four thousand dollar, uh, storage bills to MDOC because they're inmates. Because I found out that other people that are storing for MDOC charges them. And I was told that they were a contract only with that company, but I found out that contract is only for embalming inmates. It doesn't cover the pickup or the storage, so they're charging additional fees for that. So if the county, if I pick up an inmate and I store an inmate, I've got one that I stored the day before yesterday, I picked up out at the prison and they told me we're looking at three weeks before that autopsy can be completed. So, that's an expense. If I can pull that off, that's an expense that MDOC could pay the county. So over a period of time, you know, I, I think we would be gaining a little bit of ground on that. It'd take a while to pay that back, but certainly, and, and somebody did say that other counties could use us and, and we would charge them. I remember you distinctly saying this would not be for another county and the one county that they did, you know, give me an example, I know for a fact he gonna pay his bills. So, I would not be a, a fan of that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we got in that already with our, some of our nine-one-one equipment.
Right. You know, we're just in a, in a situation, it's, and it's not slacking up and.
Any idea what we're talking about, total cost?
I don't have a clue. Mike had a good idea, Mike Word had a good idea that if you add to that pre-existing building there, you basically already got one wall.
Yeah.
You're just basically gonna put a three-side thing.
Right.
That's, that's the only request I would have if you, if you went to the Marquette building to have something done and some type of a, of an engineering aspect to put whatever preventative measures you need to be putting in on the existing end wall of the building now to prevent any pervasion of odor that may come in and impregnate all the things that are over there, such as dive gear, uh, hazardous material equipment. There is, uh, uh, thousands and thousands of dollars worth of medical supplies over there, things that, that's the only, only thing that I would, that I would request as far as.
You see, well, I don't want it in my building for my secretary.
It, Jerry, all you gotta do is take the tin off and add a purling, another purling and some blue purling. You'll have to buy the roof tin, 'cause you're just gonna blow out and just do your doors.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna be able to use one side.
It'd be a hundred thousand.
Already just a match off.
You know, the medical examiner's office has a very, very modern exhaust system, but I don't.
Leave it in there.
Do what?
I, I recommend that you do not take Mr. Harrison's recommendation and go the other direction, because if you take that wall down, then you've got wide open through there. That's, that's totally, uh, uh, unless we can go build a building.
We're not talking about taking, we're not gonna take the wall down.
I can go build a thirty thousand square foot warehouse and he has the whole thing. I've, I've got about a hundred thousand invested over off across the street from him anyway, so we got the dirt worked done.
Yeah, we, we can, we won't be taking that wall down. Wherever you are, sounds like he needs to be, I mean, um, situation out there, if, if it could be sealed, say, might work, but where you, if you try to put, I think the election commissioners in the building with him, that's not gonna be a good fit.
No, that, that, that would not work because, I mean, it would work, but I just can't.
But I don't know what it costs to do what you're talking about, Jay. It's not like a good idea where he is in the basement. I don't know what kinda renovations that would take either. Whether he back in the same picture.
The only thing I see with that situation is, is dropping a person off. You know, I don't wanna be out there in the middle of the day with, with everybody coming in and out of the court traffic and me unloading a body from the back of my truck on a stretcher, you know, so there had to be something discreetly done about that.
Yeah. That's not like Marquette, better ideas more and more, but I don't know. Uh, we don't have any hard figures to know either. That's some of the.
Yeah, I was just coming up with a size that I could get by with.
Right.
Um, but you know, it would, it would definitely have to be plumbed and, um, you know, because there are situations where we have to.
And then we growing from where I thought we were starting at, it's just a place to store bodies to, to do a, a, a morgue. Why can't we go back where we started saying? We just need a place, 'cause we're in an emergency, we need a place to start putting some cadavers, you know, while everything's on hold.
And the reason for this additional stuff, uh, Jay, is because, you know, oftentimes I have to take family in there to identify somebody and I just think it would be absolutely morbid to take a mother or a father or somebody in there and just say, hold on while I open this door, this cooler and bring somebody out. That's the reason for the additional privacy stuff, you know? I mean, that's one of the worst things I've ever had to do as a coroner, is take a mother in there to identify her deceased love son who thinks he's not in that cooler. And, uh, you know, so I'm just trying to do this.
How's it to, to date if that occurs? How do you, how do you handle it right now?
Right now, where I'm at, I actually take them out and, uh, if they need to be cleaned up, you know, for whatever situation that we're in, we take them into a prep room and we clean them the best that we can, um, and we take them into a viewing room.
What we're in.
Uh, out there at Dean's or either Chancellor's is the place. You know, back when I was going to Jackson over there, they had a room. But, you know, that place is so, it's so out of hand right now. Not out of hand, they just have so many people. Cause of COVID nineteen, about eighty percent of the funeral homes stopped picking up people from residents and they'll send, especially if they're COVID patients or COVID residents, they will send a mortuary company now. They won't even touch them. So, uh, I've been over there before and it'd be as many as sixty people in that building at one time.
What about the morgue that, or maybe it wasn't morgue, uh-uh.
Do what?
The, the guy who, you took his place.
Jimmy Roberts?
Yeah, what about their place?
Mississippi Mortuary. I reached out to them and they, they pick up people from all over the state and they simply said they barely have room for their own. And they charge a hundred and twenty-five a day for storage where the others are only charging us fifty. So.
Wow. I guess that's the answer.
I tried to look at every option that I can.
Let us look. I mean, we don't have, I know we need to do something as soon as possible. We're gonna look at these buildings today after we get through and see.
Go with us.
I mean, yeah, you will. You could probably be best if you do it.
It would be.
And let's see if there's some, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm for doing whatever we gotta do, but if there's a way we can do it without building a building. And let's see if there's some, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm for doing whatever we gotta do, but if there's a way we can do it without building a building, it just seems like when we say a building's gonna cost seventy, it costs a hundred and fifty thousand. And, and I think a hundred and fifty's about the bottom end of what this, what the drawing I saw.
I can't imagine it costing that much, just metal building.
I know, I know, that's Jared.
Yeah, but you had a lot of things more than that, it's not.
I mean, just a whole of a fire station, we thought, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, and things just cost more, especially if you get Carl involved. I'm joking, Carl, I'm joking.
I'm just saying, y'all get, you can do things a whole lot cheap, but once you start getting a professional involved, they gotta meet all these coaches, and I don't know what kinda practice the coaches for morgue.
Yeah.
I don't think you just pile a lot of these on top of each other for morgue, and then you can count it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I thought about that, Dave.
No, we're not, we're not talking about putting them on top of each other, we, that's the reason for the, the larger cooler, you know.
I mean, I don't know if we gotta have certain guidelines to build something like that, I don't know.
If I, if you get a professional with an architect and engineer involved, he's gonna have to talk about all these standards and codes, and that's probably costly.
We will do something very quickly today, we're gonna go look over each building, I can figure it out, we'll bring us back to them.
Why don't you, you welcome to come look and see?
Yeah, y'all just call me, uh.
Yeah, well, we're gonna go, we're gonna look.
At your office or. Well, I gotta go to Pila Hachi now, but, uh.
We won't be long.
We got an executive.
Yeah, any one of y'all, I'll, I'll y'all have my cell phone number, y'all just text me or whatever, and I'll, I'll meet you here.
Okay, yeah, I'd like you, I'd like you to be there.
Sure, I'd love to be there.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Okay, we're gonna have to do something.
So, do we have an executive today?
Yes, sir.
Alright, hurry up, let's get this over with.
I got a meeting at point.
Meet and greet.
Hey, Janice.
Alright, I'm making a motion to discuss the need, go up, what, Carl?
I've got a two o'clock meeting in Madison County, so if y'all want me to meet y'all, I don't know what time.
Well, can you just give us the layout?
Yeah, I'm giving.
Yeah, give us the layout.
Let me give you, I have my copies.
Alright.
Hey, Janice, why you doing that? You're the garbage lady, will you try to find, I've got it in my phone, the owner of that trailer park? I've got the owner of that trailer park that wants to dump it. Remind me to give you his contact?
You got his contact?
I do, I think I do, will you get in touch with him and explain to him that he needs to, the board would bless the deal with him getting the dumpster. Cannot be seen on the road, and it can be on his property back there, I went down the road, there's plenty of good gifts. It's probably gonna be somebody that has not been on there yet, being they, yeah, you so.
That's what, that's what.
Bad lips. With the bad lips.
We, uh, we made the motion to discuss the need, we just haven't gone in yet.
You just haven't put the right picture to it.
I'm making a motion to go into that section for litigation, second by Daniel, all in favor say aye?